Thank you. Good evening, everyone. Thank you for joining us on Monday, October 6, 2025, for the Board of Selectmen, Highway Commissioners, Cemetery Commissioners Meeting. We're going to start the meeting off with the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
This meeting is being recorded.
Madam Chair.
Yes, I'd like to recognize Stephen Sullivan.
Before we get started, on behalf of the Board, send sympathies to the family of Brian Spriglia. Brian is a maintenance supervisor. To call him that's probably a disservice. He does more than that. But the recent loss in his family, he lost his mother-in-law. Helen Hayish, those of us that march in parades would see the Hayish family always gathered over in Calvary. And Mrs. Hayish lived to the ripe old age of 102. And I'm sure I send our sympathies for everyone on the board. And also extend our condolences to our board member, Mr. Jay Johnson. Jay Johnson also suffered a loss in his family recently. Stepped out, passed away. And again, I'm sure I speak for the Board and everyone present, anyone in the town. We extend our sympathies to the Johnson family for their loss.
Thank you, Sullivan.
Thank you. So, moving on, we're going to go to approval of minutes for September 25, 2025.
So move.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Unanimous. Okay. Next up, for anything that isn't already on the agenda tonight, do we have anyone here for citizens' comments? Mr. Durgan.
Does not require, hold on, Madam Chair. Cannot require.
Oh, as long as it doesn't require a vote from the Board. Perfect.
Just a question. Tobin Farms Betterment, what's going on with that? They borrowed, we borrowed the money without it going out to bid. We're charging them for this betterment. Why hasn't moved forward?
Madam Chair?
Yes.
It's not on the agenda. I would hesitate to do too much discussion.
Perfect. So what I will do with that is just direct the Town Administrator to take a look and get back to you.
Okey-dokey.
Thank you. Moving on to item four, we have several resignations. Item A is Robin Fracall from the Economic Development Committee, and item B is Robin Fracall from Government Study Committee.
Madam Chair?
Yes.
Make a motion, we accept with regret the resignation of Robin Fracall from both of the committees that you stated, and have the Town Administrator's Office prepare a letter on the Board's behalf, signed by you, thanking her for the service that she has given to the town.
Discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, unanimous. And 4C, Cheryl Lito from the Government Study Committee.
Madam Chair?
Yes.
Similar motion, have Town Administrator prepare a letter on your behalf, of your signing, on behalf of the Board, accepting with regret Cheryl's resignation, thanking her for her service. And just for an aside to the people out there, Cheryl was the only person that approached us in a public meeting and asked to be on that committee. So we certainly thank her for her service and her change in circumstances unfortunate for the town.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, unanimous. Number five, Hannah Ferris, an appointment, Hannah Ferris, Government Study Committee, appointment from alternate member to full member.
Madam Chair?
Yes.
Is Hannah Ferris present?
No, but I am. Keith Gajewski, the Chairman of the Government Study Committee.
Oh, yes.
Hannah Ferris gladly accepted, would gladly accept the appointment to full-time, and I said I'd come in her absence, and I fully recommend her as well.
Madam Chair, before we make the appointment, just one question. Do we need a, is the appointment to be like to the conclusion of the committee's business? If you put a term on it.
Through the chair, you could put an expiration of June 30, 2026. Okay, so...
So move to appoint Hannah Ferris with the expiration of June 30, 2026, to the Government Study Committee.
Perfect.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, unanimous. Thank you so much, Keith. All right. Next up, 6A, application for a change of manager for Giant Stars Inc., doing business as State Line Farms located at 59 Schofield Ave, Dudley. Proposed manager, Shilpa Ben H Patel.
Shilpa Ben.
Shilpa, thank you.
Thank you, Madam Chair. My name is Josh Levine of Levine Law in East Long Meadow. I'm here, we were here, I believe just last year, for the purchase of the store, but the law has changed in that relatively short time. It used to be the manager of record for a liquor license had to be a U.S. citizen. That has changed by state legislature in the last year, that now permanent residents, green card holders can now be town, can be managers of record. So Ms. Patel is one of the owners, married to, if you go into the store, you'll probably see her. She has been working in the store a bit, as well as at Subway, and you can see some of her work history on the application. She's had experience, a number of retail establishments, including some that sell beer and wine. So she is here presenting and has asked for the Board's consideration.
Perfect, thank you. Do we have any questions from the Board? Okay, do we have a motion?
I lost my, I lost me, I forgot for the name.
Mr. Johnson.
Madam Chair, make a motion to change the manager for Ehean Sarge, DBA State Line Farms, located at 59 Schofield Ave, Dudley, Mass. 01571, to manager Shilpa Ben Patel.
Second.
Discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Unanimous.
Thank you very much.
Ms. Patel, congratulations. Next up, we have change of location, Zoom Auto Sales and Services, 115 Schofield Ave, Alexander Wasilewski. Is Mr. Wasilewski here? Yes.
Good evening.
Good evening.
So I'm located on 93 Schofield Ave right now. Unfortunately, property got sold not too long ago, so I'm forced to move out of that property. I was lucky enough to find 115 Schofield Ave. I would like to move my business down there, as well as my dealer's license, and continue on with the business in this town. That's all.
Perfect. Any questions from the Board? Mr. Sullivan.
Thank you for staying in town for status. So 93, that's where the granite place is?
Yes, correct.
And is 115 that vacant, well, it's not vacant, but it's that metal structure up on the left?
Yeah, it's right across from Ramco, D&amp;D Construction Services, I believe own that. They have an office in the back. I was able to sign the lease with them to move forward to the front office and get quite a bit better parking spot than I do have now on 93 Schofield. So the visibility is much better for the auto sales and services as well, so.
We have a letter from Nelson stating no problems.
We do.
That's good, thank you.
Okay. Do we have a motion for the change of location?
Motion to grant the request, Alexander Wasilewski, to 115 Schofield Ave for Zoom Auto Sales and Service.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, unanimous. Thank you so much.
Thank you very much. Have a good night.
Okay. Last but not least, outdoor entertainment permit for Nichols College for October 22, 2025, from 6:00 PM to 9:00 PM, Copper Beach Quad, Center Road.
Hi, Heather Bowes, 18 Mill Street. We're looking to get a permit for our Oktoberfest, where the students will be served dinner outside. They'll have a band and a bar in approximately a 30-by-30 fenced-in area, where they'll be, need to provide IDs. We'll have a public safety detail, as well as a police detail.
Okay. And you've, if you already have the police detail, I still have to ask, you've already run this past public safety in there. I see the chief just making his way up.
Yes, real quick, they did hire details, so I'd be in favor of approving it, and also, and the next one, also approve in the year 30 truck.
Perfect, thank you. Do we have any questions from the Board from Ms. Bowes?
Yeah, one question. So this doesn't involve any parking waiver? There's no, no traffic on Center Road?
No, just the students.
That's all, thank you.
Anyone else? Okay, do we have a motion?
Motion, Madam Chair, make a motion to grant the request, Nichols College, October 22, 2025, from 6 to 9, Copper Beach Quad, Center Road.
Second.
Any discussion? Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Unanimous. Thank you. Oh, and you're still here, just kidding. So, public business, okay. So approval of the Turkey Trot Dudley PTO, Thursday, November 27, 2025, at 8:00 AM at the Dudley Town Beach.
Yes, I believe it's the 12th one, we're usually cleaned up by 9, 9:30, and on our way to the football game or home to cook dinner.
Good for you all getting out there and running first thing on Thanksgiving.
We can walk it, too.
Oh, you can walk it, too.
I can walk it, too.
Well.
You can use crutches, too.
We're on it, perfect. Do we have a motion?
Madam Chair, just the usual question, I know it's 12th, but police and fire are all, you know about the road closures and highway, everything's going to be all set. Okay, that's always my question.
Okay.
Motion to grant the request, Madam Chair, Turkey Trot Dudley PTO, Thursday, November 27, 8:00 AM to its conclusion at the Dudley Town Beach.
Second.
Discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, unanimous. Thank you so much. Okay, and I am going to pass 7B off to Mr. Jason Johnson.
Can we have Diane Anderson come up, please?
Am I coming here?
Whatever you'd like to.
You don't have a stool, so you can't see.
Mr. Marci knows how to adjust that.
Simula, hey, don't worry.
I'm trying to snap my tippy toes.
So what we'd like to do is Diane has been Scout Master, Boy Scout Troop 273, for 28 years?
Yes, sir.
Correct? And with scouting for 30-ish?
30.
30.
Yep.
What we want to do is, as she's decided to step down, we've disagreed on the language there, but we, I'm going to say step down and still be involved in scouting and help the transition, but we wanted to get some folks to come and celebrate all that hard work and dedication they've had to, not only the boys of Troop 273, including, do I have to disclose that my son was in that troop?
You do. You do, Jason.
I've been in the troop. Okay, yeah. So, okay, so disclose that as well. And all the great work you've done for the town as well, so really appreciate. So we have a certificate of recognition and some other things, in recognition of your dedication and leadership during 28 years as Scout Master, Boy Scout Troop 273, your work has made our town a better place. From the Selectmen, all of us here, thank you very, very much.
Thank you very much.
So, Madam Chair, can I tell a quick story?
Uh-oh.
No, no, it's a good one, Diane. My sons didn't progress as far up the chain as Mr. Johnson's, but they were involved when, Diane was involved with her son, David, and they used to run this very, very entertaining, bake-a-cake, raffle-it-off to fundraise. People would come in with some very ingenious cakes. So Diane was appointed, volunteered, made, I'm not sure of the right word, master ceremonies from the round church.
That's when we had the cake auction. I was the auctioneer.
Yeah, sorry, actually, she was either volunteered or drafted, I forget.
I think it's volun-told.
Volun-told.
That feels right.
And those that know Diane, in true Diane fashion, get up there and said, all right, we're going to start the auction, and I don't think I need a microphone. And that was it, off to the races after that.
And off we went, yes.
Money flowed, we had a good time, so. She's been doing it a long, long time. Thank you, Diane, for all you've done.
Yeah, thank you. Thank you very much.
And it extends into your job life, too, your daycare and everything.
Yes.
An unbelievable asset.
Are you supposed to sit down?
Mr. Marci.
So I'd like to call upon Representative Marci for some other accolades.
Other accolades. Stay right there. Jay, watch this. Up a little bit, how about that?
First time for everything.
Yes, yes, yes. So it was great to be in front of you guys again, and you know, like I always say, one of the best parts of my job is catch people doing something good, and this one is extra special. You know, to say that Diane has touched a lot of people's lives, many people's kids, including my own, is an understatement. When I first came out of my shell, crawled onto my rock, you know, to sort of get involved around here, the first thing I did was, was the, my scout family. And they gave, they put me right to work, grab a broom, john, clean up at the round church. Only an hour a week, they said. And by the way, in retirement from this, it's going to be more than an hour a week.
I think so.
That's how that works.
Yeah.
And, you know, the rest is history, just, I remember, I have lots of memories as a kid doing it. I didn't progress as far as some of the kids that I have the pleasure of giving, presenting Eagle Scout awards and stuff like that, but, because if I had that, I'd give that to you, too. But, but I wanted to come here tonight and just say something special for Diane, who everybody knows, and, whoops. And this one is from the House of Representatives, and it says, "Be it hereby known to all that the Massachusetts House of Representatives offers its sincerest congratulations to Diane Anderson in recognition of serving the community with dedication and commitment for 28 years as Scout Master of Boy Scout Troop 273." 28 years. "And the entire membership extends its very best wishes and expresses the hope for future good fortune and continued success in all endeavors, given the sixth day of October of 2025, not at the State House but in good old Dudley, signed by the Speaker of the House, Ronald Mariano, and by me, your State Rep, John Marci." Congratulations, Diane.
Thank you.
And, so Senator Fatman was here, if you blinked, you missed him, but he came, he had three stops tonight. That's, you know, and a senator, he's got 19 towns, he knows it was important to be here tonight for Diane, so I, Ms. A, as we all like to call her, still do.
Yeah.
So this one's from the State Senate, I don't have to read the whole thing again, but the same thing, your dedication and commitment after 28 years as Scout Master, serving Troop 273. And this one is signed by the President of the Senate, Karen Spilka, Clerk of the Senate, Michael Hurley, and your State Senator, Ryan C. Fatman. So again, congratulations.
That's awesome.
Senate, yeah.
Thank you, thank you. Awesome.
Oh, yeah.
Come all the way up here.
All the way up, Diane.
Oh, all the way up.
Yeah.
Right in the middle?
What? Right in the front row.
Well, good for you, I'm short, so we'll still see you all. How about that?
Jake.
I know. It's somebody special.
Thank you so much.
Thank you, Diane.
One more.
Please don't eat it on that cord.
There he's back once. One minute.
While Mr. Johnson returns to his seat, the item you've all come for, the waterline project, number eight, public presentation and Q&amp;A for waterline project, Eagle Drive and surrounding areas. Town Council, Sean Healy, LSP from Westin and Sampson, Tyon Bond Engineering Team, and DEP officials discuss with the public the plan to install the waterline, to abate contaminated private wells, and to ask questions relative to the project in advance of the October 20th special town meeting to vote to approve the loan for this project. I'd like to ask any of the specialists that have come to answer questions, come on up and grab a seat at the table. In a second, I'll ask you to introduce yourselves. In the meantime, for the question and answer portion of the presentation, we do, we want to hear from everybody who has questions. I'll recognize those that have their hand raised, and you can come up and ask. Please keep your addresses and your questions to two minutes, and once we've heard from everyone, once, I'll begin to ask for repeat speakers. So if, you know, you have new questions that are coming up as we're going through this, please don't hesitate to raise your hand, just know that, like, I might get to you a little bit later. And I know this group doesn't need to be told to be civil, but I know water cleanliness is a really emotional issue for our families and our kids. I think we'll get better answers if we can stay focused on answers and pass forward. If you, just keep it civil, please, please. All right, and let's start with the front table. If you could just, I know, this is going to be weird, like, a little back and forth. You could just introduce yourselves.
I'll start. Jeff Faulkner from Tyon Bond.
I'm Audie Starboardt from Tyon Bond.
Darwin Cervias from Tyon Bond.
Sean Healy with Westin and Sampson, I'm an LSP, working for the town.
And I'm Mark Baldi, I'm the Deputy Regional Director for the Rural Waste Site Cleanup with Mass DEP.
Mary Jude Pixley, I'm the Regional Director for the Central Regional Office of the Massachusetts Department of Environmental Protection.
And I'm Jeff Blake, your Town Council.
Okay, and I'm going to turn it over for the presentation right ahead.
Thank you. I'll kick it off, and then I'm going to hand it off to my partners here. This is an update on the Water Main Project. Can you hear me? Update on the Water Main Project. Appreciate being here. Introductions, we have the Board behind me, and my colleagues at Tyon Bond, just introduced, in addition to the Westin and Sampson, LSP, Sean Healy, and the DEP representatives as The agenda for this evening is to go over a little bit of the overview of the project, the project background, talk about what the recommended permanent solution is, why that's recommended, is that there's benefits to that project, discuss some of the funding mechanisms and budgets that have been discussed, go through a hypothetical lifecycle cost of that recommendation, and give an update on the status of the design and the schedule. So by way of background, the landfill in town was detected with per and polyfluoro alkaline substances, say that fast. We call them PFAS. In addition to the town's landfill, the company in town, Gentex, also had PFAS on their site nearby. Both of those initiated the waste site cleanup process through Mass DEP, and each of them needed licensed site professional representation. The testing of the private wells then started in concentric circles around the site until samples were non-detect. Those processes through the DEP process is what's called an immediate response action, or an IRA. The discussion with the process is that the recommended beneficial opportunity is to connect to the nearby public water system. Currently, there are 15 houses in the Eagle Drive Fairview Avenue neighborhood that have point-of-entry treatment systems in them. They're called POETS. Those are installed to treat for the water, treat the water so that the individual house can have water that is below the drinking water regulation limit. The regulations on PFAS are changing, and in the future, the current EPA regulation is that in a couple of years, the federal regulations will be lowered even further, thus requiring 25 additional houses in that neighborhood to also obtain POET systems. Right now, the regulation is for that to happen in 2029. The discussion has also been that eventually, that, you know, all houses in that neighborhood will need a POET.
Sorry, Jeff, can I, I don't want to interrupt your train, I just, I know there's a lot to cover, I just want to put a little bit of a gloss on that. Jeff's talking about the federal regulations for PFAS, which are a little bit different from the Massachusetts regulations in that they regulate individual ones, and we regulate for the sum of six. DEP's regulations are separate, so the EPA regulations apply to public water systems, the municipal water system, and those will take effect in 2029. Mass DEP is reviewing our regulations now. We had PFAS regulations before the federal government, and we will likely change ours before the federal governments come into effect. They're not going to be the same as EPAs, they're not final yet, so I can't speak to any details, but we will be changing slash lowering our standard before 2029.
Great, and I'll just add one thing to that, is that EPA and DEP, you know, have the same end goal, you know, have safe drinking water. The state regulations have to at least equal the EPA regulations or be more stringent, so the EPA regs or the state regs both have to be looked at for compliance. So at this point, I'll hand it over to Audrey.
Thank you. So, moving forward, the proposed permanent solution for this neighborhood is to extend the existing water system into the neighborhood to provide the water main in front of all the properties that have, are in this area, and so they will have the option to connect, the ability to have a water service as a point of connection instead of a well. Some benefits to this permanent solution of the water main is it will eliminate the need for continual testing and installation of ongoing POET systems in these residential homes. The water that will provide is through the town of Dudley's water system, which will, is regulated by DEP and EPA, and it's also operated by water operators who are licensed and trained. Additional to this project, there will be some fire hydrants installed in the area, so that will provide a little bit of a benefit for some fire protection, as well as something we're going to get into a little bit more detail here, is to discuss some long-term cost savings to the town.
I'll speak to the next couple of slides. Project funding and budget. So the design for this project, the water main extension, is being paid for by a grant that the town received through the Emerging Contaminants Program, so that is at no cost to the town currently. The construction funding is expected to be, well, expected to be on the town meeting in the fall. It was on the town meeting in the spring, it failed at that point in time. At that point, the town was, was under approval for an SRF program grant for construction Because the spring town- Because the Springtown meeting failed, that has lapsed, and the town reapplied for the next round of SRF funding a couple of months ago, and is waiting for that funding list to come out. The town is also coordinating the cost share of the Water Main Extension with the other responsible party that's been identified, Gentex. At this point, the, the project budget is $14.2 million, which, same value that it was presented at the Springtown meeting. That is summarized as $10.25 million as being SRF-eligible, and $3.95 million as not being SRF-eligible. And the distinction is the SRF ineligible occurs, work occurs on private parcels. So that, that is just not eligible through the SRF program, but the total is $14.2 million budget. The, the next few slides go through some hypothetical budget calculations to understand more about those costs over time. The SRF program is a great program for the town in this instance. They fund this, they would, the town is eligible for funding at a 0% interest rate for the loan portion of that, and the anticipated minimum principal forgiveness, grant in another, another way of saying that, but it's done through what's called principal forgiveness. Minimum expected value would be 9.9%, so just about $1 million of potential principal forgiveness. The SRF ineligible portion, the, that, there would be a separate loan, not, not through the SRF program for that, and that would be assumed to be a 4.5% interest rate for this exercise. So if you add and subtract the, those numbers together, it comes out to kind of an out-of-pocket cost of $16.44 million. The general understanding or hypothetical at this point is a 50/50 cost share with, with Gentex in the town. That would, so, that would summarize as about $8.22 million for each of those responsible parties from the budget standpoint. On the, the POET side, a little bit of review of what the POET systems cost right now and into the future. $248,000 is the annual cost for safe well to maintain and test the 15 existing POETS. The LSP has about a $74,000 budget for being, you know, running the, the, the management of that entire LSP system, process with, through the waste site cleanup program. Add on top of that into the future, the addition of the 25 additional POETS. So once those additional 25 POETS, the annual cost for those 25 alone would be $414,000 additional dollars annual. And included, it does not include in that is the installation cost of the POETS, which is approximately $7,500 each. And then the additional program management from the LSP for those additional 25 POETS would be about $125,000 a year. So you can see the costs add up. Those are annual costs for the POET systems. The end game for the Water Main is that it's a large cost upfront, but it lasts a long time, 75-plus years. For the subsequent slides, the LSP and POET calculations assume a 4% annual inflation rate. So these next three slides are basically one table, just chunked into, make it maybe potentially legible from, from a seat far away. But it is a table that represents 75 years' worth of hypothetical cost. The, the yellow columns on the left indicate the POET costs over time, and the blue columns on the right represent some columns related to the Water Main cost over time. The POET systems, like I said, the, the red, the red number four represents the year that those 25 additional POETS would be added to the annual cost. So you see a, a jump in costs in that year for the POET systems. And then on the, the blue cells or the blue columns, the, the loan payback is over a 30-year payback period, so there's annual installments for paying back through both the SRF program and the, the separate loan for the ineligible work. Yes, we'll just flip to the, the last slide of that sequence, the slide three of three. The story here is the POET systems cost less on an annual basis in year one, but cumulatively, over the life cycle of the Water Main, 75 years, what's shown here is $366 million of POET system costs. That's hypothetical. Don't know the inflation, how it exactly changes over time, but the story is that the POET systems over time is tremendously more expensive to the town versus a $14 million capital investment for a Water Main extension now. So with that, I'm gonna hand it over to Darwin to talk about a few topics.
Hi, yeah, so we, we also looked at the, the Water Main private well maintenance, like, for regular maintenance that you, you incurred throughout the year. So we looked at the well pump replacements, the tank replacements, and also the pump electricity that you would use per month, per year. So we accumulated those, and then we came up with a hypothetical annual cost of around $950 a year. And we also looked at the public water system that the, the town charges each customer, and we compared to an average resident household in, and the Town of Dudley to see how much that would be in a year base for the water consumption. As you can see here, like, you can see the, the, the average household would be like $13,000 gallons per quarter, and then we did the math in there with every, every quarter. So throughout, like, four quarters, we have around $836 a year that will be costing you to, to pay to the town for the usage of the water. So we have, right now, where we stand for the design, at the start of the design process, we have completed a few phases of the, of the first phase of this project. We have done the survey, survey of the, of the area. We have developed a map. We did a hydraulic map, hydraulic review of the system, how will it impact the town, current system, and then what we need to do in order to, like, make the hydraulics work for the, for that area. So we did a hydraulic memo, a review, and I, and then we submitted to the town for comments, and we, we just, that's the base for us to size the, the size of the Water Main that we're gonna install in the neighborhood. We, we have also reapplied to the SRF funding, as Jeff mentioned earlier, and we are working on the preliminary design that's completed right now. So the next step will be in progress right now is the Water Main design. We're moving forward with the design because the town has the grant to do the work, so we're designing that as is gonna go out to, to bid. And the, the upcoming work after we have this Water Main design done will be coordination with the property homeowners, and then apply for permitting. And the coordination for the property owners will be, like, when you sign up to connect to the, to the system, we will come out, and we have, we will do a survey of your house from the outside, and then a colleague of myself or somebody from my office will come out, and we'll look at your site, and we'll go to site specifics. So we have for the anticipated schedule, if everything goes as planned, we have the, as you can see, we have the 75% to be the, to be completed by December of this year. 95, 90% of the design will be completed by December to February of next year. And then once that's completed, we go into the permitting phase to submit to the, to the permitting departments, and then get the permits between January and May 2026. We anticipate this will be completed, and then the 100% design will be done in June, August of next year. And we have a public bidding from November 2026 of next year to January 2027. And we are anticipating the contract will be awarded to the contractor by February and March of 2027. So for the funding or for the construction, we have the town meetings coming up in October 20. That will depend on how we bid this project. And the draft of the IUPU list will be, is anticipated in 2026. So we have also come up with the construction phase, when it will start and when it will complete it. So this will take about two years to do it, like, starting in spring of 2027, and then, and follow final, final site restoration in spring 2029. So the construction appropriation vote for the town meeting, so the next steps will be, you know, we encourage everybody to go to this meeting and, and place your vote for this project, and see, and then the, and then the next step will be completing the design, permitting, and put it out, public bidding, and then hopefully the construction on 2027 to 2029. With that, we have, if you have any questions about the process fundings.
Okay, we're gonna start with questions from the board first, and then we'll turn it over to the public. So do we have any questions at this time from the board?
I would just ask if, Madam Chair.
Yes, Mr. Solomon.
Sean has anything he wants to add, or the DEP folks have anything they want to add to solidify the plan, like, the background of the plan going forward, what's best, best interest, best case mitigate as opposed to eliminate the problem?
Oh, sure, so I can give you my thoughts on that. So, and I've, I've stated this many times publicly, but I really do feel like this, that the water line is the most efficient and effective permanent solution for the issue that's, the groundwater plume in the neighborhood and affecting the drinking water wells. I think the, the cost estimate just speaks for itself. It's, it's just very clear that, you know, it's the, the best use of the town's money. It's the most effective use of the town's money as well. I mean, it gives, it gives each resident clean, potable water. It eliminates the, the need for a safe well or Weston and Sampson to be in your neighborhood all the time. For a lot of you to have POET systems in your basements, it's, it's not fun. It's asshole. I understand that, and really, I think everyone has the best interest at heart here. The town wants to give the residents clean water and do it the most effectively. And, and I think the residents want the same. They want to have clean water, and, and they, and they have great comments. The people that I've talked to in the neighborhood and in the PIP group, I think excellent comments, and, you know, I think just keeping a dialogue going that's positive and pushes the issue forward, I think, would be beneficial.
Anyone from DEP?
Thank you. Two different things to talk about, picking up from what Sean was saying about maintaining the POETS as, well, the water line as eliminating the risk of exposure to the contaminated water versus the POETS mitigate that risk. And those words are important because they're in our regulations, and words matter to us as regulators. And it's a top-down approach where you want to eliminate the exposure. That's the best outcome for people not to be exposed to the water is if you take the water away. You take the water away, you replace it with a water line that's managed by an excellent water department here in Dudley, and no matter what other regulations come down the line in five years, 10 years, you know you're getting clean, fit, and pure water. POET systems need to be maintained, they need to be changed out. There are people coming to your home repeatedly to take the sampling, and it goes on forever, but you're still drinking that water from your contaminated well. It's just mitigated by having this treatment system on. So it has not taken away the risk, it's just sort of cushioned you against it. And in DEP's position, under our regulations, it is by far the better choice for public health to eliminate all of the exposure, not just to mitigate it. So if there's a water line nearby in all of the sites where we have any kind of contamination, the top tier to satisfy the regulations to get to close out your site under the regulations for the state is to have public water. So that's number one. Number two, just getting back to what Jeff and Tyon Bond were talking about in these cost estimates, the SRF is the state revolving fund. It's money that comes to the states from the federal government, and it's not DEP that gives these loans. It's something called the Clean Water Trust. But what DEP does is offer technical assistance and advice in advancing the projects to go forward. There are way more projects than there are money every year. And what DEP does, and in our regional office, we do the ones for the central region, which is 77 cities and towns. It's a competitive process, and we know our projects, and we score them. And the higher you score, they draw a line when they're out of money, and you're above the line, you get it. This is the intended use plan Jeff's talking about. You're above the line, you get the money. You're below the line, you don't. The last two state revolving fund appropriations have been very high with money specifically for PFAS and this zero interest. It's not always zero, it's typically 2.9, you know, 2%. This is free money. This is 0% loan. On top of that, because PFAS is such a national issue, this is money that the gov, when the federal government gave us this money, gave the Clean Water, the Trust, the ability for principal forgiveness. So you get a loan, you're not paying interest on it, and then the state's gonna say, yeah, you don't have to pay back that million, or whatever the number is. So it's, it's a, in, in my long time of doing this, I have never seen a program for communities to borrow like this, 0% plus principal forgiveness. I'm not sure that's gonna be around anymore. And I think if you have to go out to the market to borrow, if you did not get on the SRF list for some reason, the slide showed market rate borrowing obviously depends on interest rates, but 4.5% I think is a reasonable number that Tyon Bond was using. I don't think it takes a lot of thought to figure out a 0% better than 4.5% on borrowing. So those are just two different pieces, and I, and I apologize. I know the question was about the eliminate versus mitigate, but I think in terms of what happens to your water bill that you've never had before, you're taking away the cost that you have with the well. You're taking away the intrusion. You're taking away a lower degree of protection for a very long time, and then you have this financing that's very attractive. So, thank you.
Mr. Sigunamich.
Thank you. I just had a question for whomever put together the cost estimates. I just want to make sure I'm reading it correctly. It looks like the town's costs at 10 years, at 10 years, the cost of the POET system would pay for the water line-ish. Am I, am I right?
Yeah, you're correct.
Using the cost sharing number, correct?
Correct.
Yeah, cost sharing.
Looking at the one that says the town's costs.
Second column.
Second column from the left.
That's to break even, though.
It is 10 years, am I seeing? I just want to make sure I'm understanding that right.
Yeah, that's about right.
It's about right. So the, the piece that I want to underline is for people looking at the financial aspect of this, how this will affect us. If we do the water line, it's less expensive than the POETS. The POETS, if we stay with the POETS, at that 10-year point, we've paid for the water line. Everything we've paid, we pay after 10 years is extra that we're paying. And, and if I've heard anyone from town over the past few years, everyone's worried about money. How much does it cost? What about taxes? What about this? That's the key point if you're worried about cost. 10 years of being on the POET systems pays for the water line. That's all, thank you.
Other questions from the board? Other questions from the board?
I just have one more, Madam Chair, and I was going to wait that next one. So at the previous town meeting, and I don't have the vote total in front of me, it did fail, but we needed two-thirds majority. But one of the issues broached that night, and I'm not sure if the gentleman's here, was why couldn't we use the $14 million to relocate the dump, to dig it up? Notwithstanding the fact that the plume has already exceeded the boundaries of the dump, and I don't know if I refer to Mr. Ruder or, I'm not sure who drew up the estimate, but we did have someone draw up the estimate on what it would cost to, even if it was feasible to get someone to take the material. Does someone give that number to everybody? Not that it was a realistic solution.
I missed it through the chair. I did not draw up that number.
Okay. Mr. Healy?
Yeah, so we did provide an estimate. Our civil engineers who are managing the landfill compliance, and we did do volume estimates and we, and cost estimates. Just for the transportation and disposal, just transportation and disposal of the waste would be over $100 million. And that does not include construction costs and, you know, restoration costs, so.
Madam Chair, if I may--
Yes.
Thank you. I don't know why anybody would want to do that. That's kind of one of the craziest things I've ever heard. When the town administrator called to ask, does DEP, how would DEP treat this project? I said, I don't know, I've never heard of anybody want to dig out a landfill. First of all, the contaminations theory, take away the landfill, the contamination stays. I'm really not sure what the point of that would be. But I polled all of our four regional offices, as well as our Boston program, to ask if anyone has ever done this, and the answer was no. I do have pretty substantial experience working with landfills in my job, and I can tell you sometimes when you're doing landfill work and you get to the edge of the landfill and you find out that it's not really capped as far as you want it to be, and you need to dig that up and tuck it back under the cap, the consequences to the people who live around that landfill are extreme. It smells, you have rats, you have flies on your house. There was one neighborhood where we had a landfill that was being partially capped, and there was a house, and the entire side of the house was covered with flies. So, you know, this whole, you know, does it work scientifically and all of that? I'm not a scientist. I don't think you could do it, maybe $100 million, I'm not sure what you get for spending that crazy amount of money, but it would, it would drive you from your homes. And that's my not-technical opinion, but I've seen enough and I've smelled enough to know that that's, in my mind, not feasible.
It looks like you had a comment. I think to add my comment.
I'd just like to add that without the water line, you still, without the water line, you still have to address the source. And maybe it's not digging up the landfill, but it's, it's going to be some remediation that will be more robust than if you have to put in the water line and likely more expensive. You will also probably have to do a more robust assessment work that will cost potentially hundreds of thousands of dollars. So there are other advantages here to thinking of this, not just as the water line, but the landfill is a source too, that would have to be controlled more, again, more rigorously if the water line is not in place to eliminate that exposure.
Can I just explain what Mark means? So if you're in, there are different areas, different areas have different cleanup standards, depending on, are people drinking the water or is there a water line? If you're in an area that has a water line, you don't have to clean it up to the same standard because people aren't drinking the water. If you have an area that's private wells, it's a much higher standard to clean it up because people are using those private wells. There are other rules that go with it, but in essence, what Mark is saying, that once the water line goes by, it's a less burdensome cleanup than it will be if you continue with the Poets, and it's a higher quality, a higher level of remediation. I'm not sure if that makes sense, but that's, that's the idea, is that it's totally unrelated to the water cost, it's how much is it going to cost to get to what we call a condition of no significant risk, which is what it takes to close out the site.
And an alternative, the water line, is likely going to cost as much, if not more, than the water line itself.
So I know in the presentation, we kind of went over some of these things, but at town meeting, there were a lot of questions about different elements of the project itself. One of the things that I know residents were worried about were whether or not repaving for the roads to have these water lines installed, like, was part of the scope of the project. Would you be able to speak a little bit about that and whether that's included in the funding? Just to, you know, beat a dead horse, I guess.
Sure. The assumption on the cost at this point is that the pavement will be trench repair on the roads. That's fundable through the program. The pavement will be two times done, one temporarily right after the water main is installed, and then after a settlement period, usually over a winter. The trench would be cut one foot wider on either side, and permanent pavement in that trench pat, trench area would be reinstalled. That's the standard method.
Thank you. Okay, so one of the other questions that came up a couple of times was the rights to the road and to put in the water line. Where Eagle Drive is a private road, like, how and why does the town have the authority to construct a water line on it? I figured I would ask in this situation as well, Attorney Blake.
And you're looking at me. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Sure am.
I think we have gone over this a number of different times. It is privately owned, we've done research that shows that for a good, a fair amount of Eagle Drive, some of Fairview and Joseph are owned by the residents to the center line under what is known as the derelict fee statute. In our request, we are going to take by eminent domain and utility easement down those ways. So even though it is private property, under the Fifth Amendment of the U.S. Constitution and our Declaration of Rights, a municipality can take by eminent domain for a public purpose. And I think that it would be very hard pressed for anyone to say putting a sewer or water line down a street isn't a public purpose. There's a process that would have to be followed, and I'm happy to walk us, walk the town through that if and when that time comes.
Okay. Perfect. Thank you. Any other questions? All right. From the public, I think over here, your hand was up way before we were ready. Come on down. Just as a reminder, if you're coming up to the podium, just identify yourself by name and the street that you live on.
Gail Gibbs, 22 Circle Drive. My question, I have a couple of them. Men's Own Way behind me is on Town Water, Old Circle Drive is on Town Water. Circle Drive, Paula Lane are not in this plan. What is your contingent in 2027? If we have more leaching to our area, how will we be added into the plan? Why aren't we in the plan? We're landlocked, they're the only two roads that don't have water. So what is the answer for that?
I can, I can take that. So currently, that neighborhood is undergoing testing. There's testing that's occurring currently, and it's going to be seasonal testing, so each home is going to get four rounds of seasonal data. That data will be evaluated, and if the data indicates that Gentex and the town are responsible or they are potential sources for the impacts in the neighborhood, and those impacts require remediation, then the town will move forward with the installation of a water line as needed.
Wouldn't it make sense to ask right now, as you're looking at two years from now? And then what is the five- or 10-year plan for our development? Does this all get done when you guys finish and then you're all bye-bye and we're left? We want to know what that contingent plan is. The other one is, I want to know what Gentex has for pollution policy. Do they have one? What is their limit? Can we access that? Are they paying out anything?
Funding, I would have to defer to Ty and Bond on funding timing.
Yeah, I guess not answering the Gentex portion, but just adding to the, what we can do now, the grant for the design was an application that was submitted, and there are rules to that application. So if the current location did not show that there was exceedances, the grant funding agency wouldn't allow the design to be more extensive than the current contamination plume or circle. But as is in every municipal process, if another problem pops up, it's dealt with as its own problem, and another application through that same program could be entertained.
Is our plume level high, going higher? Are we testing higher over what we were before?
There were two rounds that were done early on in the Circle Drive area that were consistent. They weren't going up, and we just, another round was just done for Circle Drive and their surrounding area, that the results are just coming in now, being evaluated, so.
So do we know what portion Gentex is paying out of this? Do they have pollution policy? Do we know that? Or is that something nobody wants to answer?
I don't have any information. Perhaps the town might have information or--
Who would have that?
Sure. I don't have that myself.
Attorney Blake?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I've had extensive discussions with Gentex, and that has never come up.
So they don't have a policy that you know of?
I don't know that, but it has never come up in my discussions with them.
I handle insurance, so generally, something like that, they would have to have one. Generally, they would probably have one. Has nobody ever asked them about it? Has put a claim in for the town? The claim, the town hasn't put a claim in against them for pollution?
I guess the answer is no, but they're paying 50%.
Oh, so they're paying--
Yes.
50% of some of it, but not all of it. And your DAA experience, how much of a chance do you think we've got of being fully polluted in our neighborhood?
So you're asking--
Yeah, I'm asking--
That's not a legal question.
I'm sorry, I'm asking the lady there.
Okay.
How much of a chance do you think of us being fully polluted at some point?
I'm not sure what "fully polluted" means, but I can tell you--
We don't have clean water.
The way, the way the investigation works, which is the license site professional for the site, for the town, and then LSP for Gentex, have to determine the nature and extent of the contamination. And so this, this rounds of testing going out, going out, going out in these circles, we had, in our presentations here before, these red-yellow-green maps. Green is good, it's non-detect. Yellow is detected, but below the drinking water standard. Red is detected above the drinking water standard. As you go and you reach the greens, that's the green properties all around. That enables the license site professional to say, we have determined the extent of the plume.
So how long are they--
Can I just finish?
Yeah.
So at that point, the LSP will design the remedial action. Here is the nature of the contamination, it's dioxin, it's PFAS, it's whatever. Here is the extent, and the solution is X. At that point, when the LSP gets to a condition of no significant risk and they've closed out the site, the site's all done. At that point, if you're not on the water line, you're your own public water supplier, and you are responsible for your drinking water. Mass DEP does not regulate private wells. So the point that the site is closed out is the point that the sampling stops.
So how long, how long are we going to be sampling for? How many years?
Nobody has a crystal ball.
Oh, I'm sorry.
I'm sorry, I'm not the technical person.
So we're required to sample for one year from each resident, so we're going to do a seasonal sample for a year. All those results will be evaluated as we get them in. And if they, the results indicate that we need a Poet System on a house, then a Poet System will be put on a house.
So that will be after next year, 2026 should be done?
We evaluate the sample data every, every season. So we just got a sample set that just came in, so.
So when would our final year be?
Your final, it depends on the house, because some houses in the neighborhood have already been sampled twice. So they'll be done--
After two, that's it?
Their seasonal sampling year will be up sooner than the ones that just got sampled.
So--
Yeah. So it'll be a year--
By 2027, you should be done, right?
For all the houses, all the houses in that area will be a year from now.
So by 2027, you'll be done sampling, we'll be left swinging in the breeze, because our street possibly is not sampled correctly. So then we would have to pay for our own Poet Systems, right?
No, if there's a Poet System required under the, under the work that we're doing, it will be paid for by the town in Gentex.
When does that expire?
It doesn't.
So five years from now?
Yep.
If my, I will be able to come and get that?
Yep.
What do I have to do? I have to pay for testing?
Nope. The testing's being done by the town in Gentex.
And how, has Gentex given an end date? Or are they going to, like--
Nope.
Reaffirm under a new name, and then this all just mysteriously goes away? I've had experience in that. So that's what we're looking at. I don't understand why you wouldn't want to take our two streets on when there's water behind us, water to the side of us, and water going to flow us. You're not making any sense, but, thank you.
Right behind Scott. Yeah, in the green. Can you come up to the microphone? Thank you.
I just think there was some misunderstanding. Lisa Camp, LSP for Gentex Optics. So what Shawn was explaining is, we're doing sampling to even figure out if there are issues in the Circle Drive, Paula Lane area that appear to be potentially related to the contamination that's been identified in the Eagle Drive neighborhood. We are still evaluating that. Like Shawn said, we're going to take four rounds over the, you know, winter, spring, summer, fall, capture all the seasonal variability of the water table, et cetera, and then evaluate the nature of that contamination and try and understand if it looks related or not. If it looks related and it's at levels that require a Poet, and the water line is still, you know, either in the works or far off, those homes will be given Poets. Everyone who has detections is being provided bottled water. That has been from the get-go. So we're mitigating drinking water exposures. Everyone who has had detects of PFAS in the sampling program has been offered bottled water. That is a fact, and we have documentation on that. So we need to evaluate it to even understand if there is an issue in that area, then we come up with a remedial strategy, like Mary Jude and others have said. And as necessary, I think, if the area is found to have contamination that warrants elimination of the drinking water pathway, then I think the town of Dudley will work to design the appropriate public water system, which like everybody has been explaining, that is the gold standard, that is the permanent solution for private wells that have been impacted by anything. This isn't just a PFAS issue or one for dioxin. Sometimes we have coronated solvents, sometimes there is arsenic or cadmium. This is any time that there's private wells that have been impacted, we don't want to put the onus on a homeowner to have to worry about maintaining the system in perpetuity. And also, when you go to sell your house, having to deal with explaining that to the next owner because you have a recording on your deed that says you need to maintain this Poet System in perpetuity. That's a tale of like sampling and maintenance and costs and uncertainty that I don't think most people want to deal with. So that's why we're just trying to explain and really advocate for people to understand it's the gold standard. It is the permanent solution to sort of end all the sampling, all the ongoing costs, and all the uncertainty that is related to private well contamination, so.
I don't disagree with you, but that would make sense to then add up two streets that are right within trifecta.
So just to, just to put a button on that, I think, I believe that, you know, because of the grants that we're applying for and the loan type, Lisa, this is my understanding, and please, there's a lot of experts up here that are not me, obviously, because of the application that we started with, we can't at this time add those streets because they're, again, it's still in the process of being sampled. Is that accurate to say?
Yeah, I guess I'll add, when we first started talking about the application for this, Circle Drive and Paula Lane were part of that memo, and the grant people said, we got to take it out. You can't get funding for it through the program.
Can we get something in writing that we will be put in for this if this continues to be an issue? Because I really don't want to be-- 'Cause I really don't wanna be five years from now, ten years from now, when I'm retiring, trying to sell my house, and by the way, they go, "Oh, you need a Poet system, you have to put that in." What is it, fifteen, twenty thousand? I have no clue. You know, what is that? No, don't clue. Or, you have to get on town water, oh, and you have to pay for it. So, is there any guarantees for us on our street? 'Cause we're all in the age group starting to retire, and I don't wanna sell my house to a young family now and have them go, "Well, thanks for poisoning us," in five years, you know? So, what is the answer for the town for us for that? Jeff?
I'm happy to, through you, Madam Chair, I'm happy to try to answer that. I mean, you give me a bunch of hypotheticals. Right now, your water is, hasn't tested above an exceedance, as far as I know. If you're asking for assurances that if it does, will the town, what, put in another water line?
Yeah.
I don't think you, I could...
For our fifteen, twenty houses.
I don't think, I, I, look, you've been to the town meetings, haven't you?
Yep.
We are, we are beholden to what the town as a whole, its legislative body, the town meeting, will agree to. So, even if every one of us up here said, "Yeah, yeah, it's a great idea, we'll put a water line down there if we have the exceedances," we, we can't give you those assurances, because it would have to be funded by town meeting. As far as the SRF funding goes, I think you heard that the, certainly the zero percent financing and loan forgiveness is probably not gonna be around for, for much longer. So, I don't know how the town could meaningfully give you anything in writing that says, "If you have an exceedance, we'll put in a water line." I, I just...
So, it's generally to the point now that it's, you guys are gonna get a zero loan, which would be great for the town. I fully understand that for the majority of people, that's gonna be great, but for us, it's not gonna be great. So, I would definitely vote no, and I try and outlast you guys. That's my end game. I'm gonna try and outlast you.
What do you mean?
Drag this on, vote no, 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 until you have to get us in there, because we will end up with, we will end up with some of these issues with the water. It's just, it's how it leaches out. We know that. Pollution just keeps going out. So, we will be in there at some point. So, that's my end game. I'm gonna keep voting no.
But it would be a lot cheaper.
No, I don't care about being cheap for you, I don't care about being cheap for me.
Do we have any other questions? Joshua Bucier?
Joshua Bucier from sixty-three Flexfield Road. I'm a member of the FAA. I've been kind of following this entire project as things have been going on, and I've, as someone who's been coming to these meetings and following along, just more as a comment to the town, everyone that I've seen from tie-in bonds from the town is genuinely trying their best to figure out this problem. And if we're talking about personal costs and personal effect on like everyone's lives, if you're talking about health issues down the road, that's gonna be more of a cost than the water line is. If we're talking about, you know, the limited scope of this specific project, which already has bureaucratic inertia towards it, it seems this is the best issue in the short term and the long term for people's health, as well as for generally the town's budget in the long term, in terms of trying to reduce the need for raising taxes later on. So, I guess my question for the town would be, if this water line project doesn't go through as it has in the past, there's, is there going to be another more expensive option that we're going to have to take, or I assume this is the best option after everyone's taken a look at everything?
There are an awful lot of people that, that can speak to that, but I think the short answer is, I mean, we've, we've just been provided a cost summary. Staying on the path that we're on is the more expensive route. I don't know if there's anyone else that wants to comment on that?
Madam Chair?
Yes.
I think you hit the nail on the head, and Tie-in Bond gave a presentation last year. Poets, the cost, the maintenance, installation, it's not sustainable. We, I get accused a lot of doomsday, this and that. We would, we will not have a town budget, a functioning town, in a number of years if we have to look at the escalating costs of maintaining just Poets. It's, Carrie's a numbers guy, it's unsustainable.
Mr. Sigunovich.
You're absolutely right, it is unsustainable. And there's two options here, from what I understand. It's Poets or the water line. There's no essential oils or voodoo or anything like that. It's this or that. Is that, is that accurate? It's Poet or water line?
Poets with additional source control and remediation for the landfill. A water line with less remediation and assessment for the landfill. Exactly. Thank you.
All right, and just one follow-up question, somewhat related to her business. Is the scope of this project able to expand, period, or is the grants that we've already applied for set in stone for what the scope of the project already is?
So, they're two different things. There's the state revolving fund loan, which is the big chunk of money, but the zero percent interest and some principal forgiveness. And there's the six hundred thousand dollar grant that's funding the design work for the water line. It's a grant, it's free money, it was one-time, one-program money that EPA gave to the states. And for DEP, it was not a competitive process, which is highly unusual. The four regions of DEP, the regional directors were asked to identify, in a very small pot of money, the first year was thirty-eight million dollars and the second year was nineteen million dollars. There are three hundred and fifty-one cities and towns. I'm trying to remember how many, a hundred and some with PFAS. I chose Dudley, and Dudley was one, number third in the whole state to get the initial, that six hundred thousand dollar grant, cash money not being paid back. That's the grant Jeff was talking about, was that the, that money could be spent only on where there's contamination. We got the second nineteen million dollars. I'm going back to the grant people and saying Dudley needs more money. And I can't tell you that I'm gonna be successful, but I'm kind of an annoying person, and I'm pestering people. Town administrator submitted that application on Friday, and I'm trying to shepherd it through the process to get at least another half a million dollars. And again, nineteen million across the whole state, and I'm asking for a half a million dollars for the town of Dudley. That's, that's hopeful, that that will be another chunk of money that's free money. And now that the facts have changed, you know, as you go on and you get more sampling and as EPA's numbers came out already, which are lower, the standards have changed. So, if you are exceeding, just take one of them, the PFOA, PFOA, instead of having the PFAS six number that the state has, the number for PFOA is four parts per trillion. So, now, if you have PFOA at four parts per trillion in your private well, you can be included in the grant. So, we're hopeful, we've worked very hard, constant speed dial, to get the second application in, which was on Friday. So, more to come on that, and I, I wish I could be here with, with another bag of money tonight. I'm not, but maybe soon-ish, a couple months, we should find out.
Thank you very much for your response.
Madam Chair?
Yes.
May I just go back to the previous speaker, who I was trying to say something when she walked away? Can you go back to your first slide that shows the proposed water line? Keep going. It's the map.
The map, yeah.
Oh, this one, I'm sorry.
So, the previous speaker, I don't know where, well, Circle Drive, they're up there. The previous speaker had said, "I'm gonna vote no, 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 until they include me." So, if you can see all that red area, that no, that doesn't have a water line. So, if you get in your exceedances up there at Circle Drive, say, in five or seven years, and this fails, we're going to have to try to do a water line for all the red area plus your area. If this passes, and you've spent fourteen millions, and you have fourteen million, and you have a water line where all that red is, the water line up to your area is going to be very short and probably a lot cheaper. So, it would benefit you if you, in five or six or seven years, got to that exceedance. So, I, I just, I, I know, I understand how you're thinking, but I just, maybe think about that.
I do understand that.
Okay.
I just wanna know who's gonna pay for it? You guys or me?
If it comes down to putting a water line in, it would, it would be a town project, full stop. Like, you, I mean, am I wrong to say that you can't, as a private citizen, hire a company to come tie into a water line that's owned by the town to begin with?
Does it stop your, your access to your lot? Does it go down the road and then you pay for your lot to be put on, or whatever, for the lookout?
I'm, I'm happy to step in. I, I think it would really depend upon, like, like what we're proposing with these, where you see all the red, we're proposing that the town is going to go, and those were the unreimbursed costs that, that I think, if you heard Jeff, he said something about working on private property. What the town is proposing there is, if you sign up, we're gonna go, and we're gonna, we're gonna go right to your, right into your house. You are a hundred percent right. Typically, the, the water, the water department stops right at your property line. But if it's gonna be the same as it is proposed here, then they're gonna go right into your house. And that will, that will depend upon the exceedance, that'll, that'll depend on a lot of things. But that's the proposal now. And, you know, I'm, I'm not gonna predict the future, but if, but if there are similar circumstances, I suspect there will be a similar solution.
Any other questions? Mr. Durgan?
I see the loop, the Gentex is gone. Is it gone from the project or just not on this map? You guys are gonna have that little line, the Gentex?
Yeah. Ms. Chair, through you. The, the hydraulic work that was done off of the project, a memo was submitted to the town under review, but it recommended that connecting to the existing water system in two spots. So, not through the Gentex parcel.
Okay, so it's not gonna be part of Gentex anymore? We're not going through the woods anymore? Yes.
The memo is submitted to the town for their review.
Okay. What about the same thing on Joseph Street, the Fairview?
Memo is submitted to the town for their review.
Can we go to the costs? You're saying that it's gonna be for, what'd you say? Four, two forty-eight K? Where'd you get that number? Is that a tie-in bond number or is that Sean Healy number? Looks like a year of maintenance for Sean Healy is going to be two eighty-six, five hundred, and that's a year's worth. That's the email that you gave to John. Do you remember Sean Healy?
I think Darwin has a breakdown of the costs. He can answer your cost question.
The, the two forty-eight, that cost came from a safe well for the twelve months that they've been doing work for the town, maintaining and testing fifteen Poets.
I have a projection invoice from, sent to John Root, it's for one seventy-two.
It's one seventy-two.
So, this is?
This is including the Gentex portion of it. It's one seventy-two.
So, that town's portion is one seventy-two?
The town's portion is one, actually, one seventy. Number that they give you is actually projected for 2026 with the escalation. The number that they, that I use for this one is one fifty-six, which is the town portion, and ninety-two is the Gentex portion. Is included in there.
Okay, so, that's not two forty-eight. That's not what we're gonna be paying for Poet systems as a town, though. We're not gonna be paying that two forty-eight that you guys are projecting, so this, this, you know, big chart that you got on the next slide.
It's two forty-eight combined, if we, Gentex.
We're not paying that. We're paying half of that.
Yeah, this...
See, the point I'm trying to make is, you're trying to make it look like we're gonna be paying a hundred million dollars in thirty years, and it's really gonna be like twenty million maximum.
So, Mr. Durgan, going forward, if you could address the questions through the chair, I'd appreciate it. Second, and I, I just wanna kind of piggyback off that really quick. So, between this breakdown and the next spreadsheet, where it says that our yearly cost is like three hundred and twenty-two thousand dollars, am I right to assume that those numbers include portions of the amount that's listed on Poets versus the water line? So, this slide versus that one? Like, am I interpreting that correctly? Darwin, sorry, to put you on the spot. But I, I think, is that kind of what you're getting at? Like, we have these costs written out?
Yeah, you're saying that's gonna cost us? I can't read it from all the way back there, so I have no idea. If it's the same chart as last time, though, then it's gonna be the same result. You're, you're adding things that aren't included in this negation cost, too.
Sure, but it's taking, and again, I hate to speak for anyone who knows more than I do, but my understanding between those two slides is that the Poets versus water, water mean life cycle cost analysis is everything that's being billed, not everything that the town is responsible for. Everything that the town is responsible for is on the next slide with the LSP sampling Poets item, which, again, you're absolutely right. It wouldn't include that full two forty-eight. But if you're adding up the two forty-eight, the seventy-four thousand, the four hundred fourteen thousand, the hundred and twenty-five thousand, all of that, it's, there's a portion for us.
That, that number doesn't exist, it's a hypothetical. It may exist in the future, but right now, we're not paying that. That's not, that's not a number that exists.
Because there's a cost-sharing agreement, we wouldn't pay all of it.
I'm saying the four hundred fifteen does not exist. Right now, that's the, that's, it's based off of twenty-five extra Poets with this four parts per trillion. Correct? Can anyone confirm that? Through the chair, can anyone confirm that?
Madam Chair?
Yes.
Clearly says anticipates annual cost for safe well for maintenance and testing of twenty-five additional Poets. The answer is right there.
Right there.
The question they asked is answered. It's anticipating a cost based on, and Sean can correct me on today's value of putting that, those systems in.
Yeah, those are safe well costs, the four fifteen, yeah.
But that's not town. That was safe well providing information. And again, that's today's dollars, and everyone here that's smarter than me on this process is clearly indicated it's only gonna go up. If we don't put these twenty-five in for five years, his, his question will be moved, because it'll probably be double the cost.
Madam Chair, if I may, I, I think what the speaker is trying to infer is that the four hundred and some odd thousand dollars is never going to happen. I think we have DEP here, and they can inform us or not, and we have experts here that can inform us or not, if these twenty-five additional Poets will be required. It's my understanding that they would be required in the year of 2029. And in fact, I think that might be a low estimate, because there could be additional areas that need them as well. I don't know if the experts wanna confirm that?
Madam Chair?
Yes, please.
So, the, the EPA numbers, the four parts per trillion for the six, but of course, it's not the same six that we use, those apply to public water systems. So, your town water will be treated, the number kicks in in 2029, to meet those new, those new numbers. It's the same technology, the treatment, again, Dudley runs a great water system, so that water's all gonna be taken care of. What will have to happen in Massachusetts is that we'll have to change the groundwater class, the groundwater requirements for areas where the private wells are. Again, we don't regulate private wells, but we regulate when there's contamination in private wells. The groundwater protection number ends up being the same as the drinking water standard. So, the number will change, but that's because it's a cleanup number, not because of EPA. It will be a change to the state cleanup regulations. And as I said, our drinking water standards are already under review, so I would expect that the Massachusetts standards, which include the drinking water sources and the cleanup numbers, would be promulgated before 2029. I know that was a lot of jibber jabber.
Yeah, that was a lot. So, when the, when the state actually changes it for Mary Jude, through you to Mary Jude, when the state actually changes the, the site, I mean, the, lowers the standard, how long do we have? How long's the town have to comply with that before we get fined or whatever the punishment is?
I'm not sure what the question is, when, when the rules become final. I mean, and then that's the number that's in effect, so...
Yeah, but, well, the rules just became final for the federal, but they have till 2029. Is it the same thing?
Because that's what the rule says.
Okay.
So, the rule was promulgated last March or April, and it set some timelines. Massachusetts is one of only sixteen states that currently regulates for PFAS. The EPA rule means all fifty states have to do that. Another reason why the money's gonna go away, there's only so much money, and now fifty states are looking for that money instead of sixteen. The, the...
Yeah, but, well, the rules just get, became final for the federal, but they have till twenty twenty-nine, is it the same thing?
Because that's what the rule says. So the rule was promulgated, um, last March or April, and it set some timelines. Massachusetts is one of only sixteen states that currently regulates for PFAS. The EPA rule means all fifty states have to do that. Another reason why the money's gonna go away, there's only so much money, and now fifty states are looking for that money instead of sixteen. Um, the, the, um, lost my train of thought. What was your question again, Mr. Durgan?
Uh, well, yeah, was, what's the timeline? Would they, would they be a set timeline?
Thank you, thank you. So the regulations had systems that have never sampled. There's a timeline by which they have to start sampling, and they have to sample at a certain frequency. So there's all this phase in that ends in twenty twenty-nine as the compliance date for systems that are not already being regulated. And again, in Massachusetts, we're already there, so it doesn't really matter so much for us. What I'm talking about is the numbers in Massachusetts may change before then, and when the cleanup number changes, it will be published for comments as a regulation. We'll take those comments, then we publish them final, and it will have an effective date. And then on the next day is when they take effect. Or whatever it says, if it's set a deadline. But typically, it's, it's in effect when the regulation is final.
One more question? Through the chair to, I guess, Mark maybe, or Mary Jude, too. If we put a water line in, do we have to still monitor the landfill? You know, the, the post-closure monitoring for like twenty-five years?
It's, it's two different, it's two different regula- regulatory schemes. You have to monitor the landfill under the solid waste regulations, even if there's no contamination. I mean, that's, that's just what you have to do to monitor for surface water, groundwater, and landfill gas coming out. And the post-closure monitoring period is thirty years from when it closed, and that applies to all the landfills in the state. And that's, that's just ongoing regardless of water lines, poets. It's a whole separate set of regulations.
Thirty years from when it closed or thirty years from when the post-closure monitor plan was, was created? Like, we didn't have it, supposed to have it in ninety-six, we didn't do it till twenty-one?
Yeah, I think it's, I think it's when the post-closure monitoring plan is approved. Um, they're not really complicated because the regulations tell you what you have to do, but yeah, I think that's right without having my regulations with me. Do you have my regulations? Do you have the three ten C M R part nineteen with you?
Me? No, I don't.
Okay.
The PIP activities, is that gonna be sticking around with the water line? PIP, public involved?
PIP activities will continue, uh, till, till we get out of the MCP process.
Phase two comprehensive assessment, that continues even with the water line?
Uh, yes, as Mark indicated, there are phase two CSA will be required regardless of what regulatory, uh, agency we're under, whether we're under the MCP or we're under solid waste, there's gonna be phase two CSA required.
And will you guys be testing other neighborhoods? Like, it's gone two thousand feet away from where the water's flowing. Are you guys planning on testing Truman Ave? That's about the same distance?
Uh, we're developing the scope of work, and we'll definitely have a meeting and present the scope of work to the PIP group, and we can all talk about it.
Oh, one question for Jeff Blake. Pro tanto, how much, uh, how much are we looking for? I got a hundred square feet. He said I own it. How much, how much am I gonna get for this pro tanto taking?
We will follow the process contain, contained in chapter seventy-nine.
Oh, do you have like an estimate, or three hundred bucks?
None, zero.
Linear foot?
Nope, that's not my, you know, that's not the process, and I'm, I'm certainly not gonna sit here and tell you what I think it is.
All right. Oh, yeah, and Mary Jude, just one point. Uh, you said that the poet systems, that the people are drinking mitigated water? Well, that's what we're drinking through town water, too, because that's all mitigated through a big poet system, too. And then it's going through thirty pipes and chlorinated. So it's, it's kinda the same thing.
It's, it's not the same thing because the water supply is constantly tested, and it's sampled frequently, and there's treatment on it, and private wells are sampled quarterly. So there's a very high degree of certainty of the quality of the drinking water that's managed by the water department. It is not as high quality certainty when you're only looking at water once a quarter.
Additional questions?
Two?
Sorry.
Um, Rick Heist, I live on Circle Drive also. Question, what's the steward our taxes? I voted for this for the last two meetings, right? We get, we fell short, I think, six votes the last time. And I, I see what the cost is if we do nothing, which is inconceivable. I mean, nobody would wanna live in this town, you won't be able to afford to, but what does this steward our taxes in the next couple of years if we go ahead with the water line? We have to pay for it somehow.
Is this a pastor? Yeah. Uh, I, I would like to ask the treasurer collector to come on up and speak to that, maybe, if you can, Mr. Carmini.
Did an analysis of that in the last vote?
He did. Because I, I, we think you did an analysis on it at the last vote. I don't, I can't trust my brain.
I haven't been part of this, uh, for any of it.
Madam Chair, I've, I've not been to a finance team meeting. Was this issue ever brought up in a finance team meeting that Jim, uh, Treasurer may have been involved, where it was discussed?
It, it hadn't been.
Sure.
The borrowing has, but...
Oh, the borrowing has, but not the impact on...
Really, this, uh, I was in the audience when this went through the first time, so, from basic math, uh, fourteen point two million dollars at anywhere between a five, four point seven five, five point two five, somewhere between one point four two million a year, and that's with no discounts or anything, um, raises your, your tax of ten fifty-seven up eight point four percent, and that's not with your principal forgiveness or zero interest on a portion of it. Again, or, or cost sharing, you know, again, um, listen, I'd love to sit down and crunch numbers and, and go through and do this, um, and have something, you know, put together ahead of this. Uh, but I, my, was my understanding that this exercise was to demonstrate that a poet system is a stopgap measure, um, and it was unsustainable, whether or not it was a ten year, uh, or twelve or fourteen. And if you start to maneuver numbers around, could you shorten it to nine perhaps? Could you extend it out to fourteen? Yes, but the idea, it's, it's only that stopgap measure. So I, um, eight and a half percent on top of a tax rate, of which you have all of your values sliding, whatever you might have had for new growth. Again, um, million variations, you know, a quick number. Your taxes go up by roughly eight and a half percent, um, at the far end, doing this with commercial. I would like to add something as a, as a resident, um, and I understand that this is the best scenario. The town has gone through and borrowed for the SRF, where there is principal forgiveness, there is zero interest loans or reduced interest loans and what have you. In the event, and those programs are great, they've gone through, and we even had the second re-emortization of a schedule that saved even more. Going off topic now, but still commercially, in the event that you wanted to do this and not qualify for the SRF, this is something that I think you could do. Um, obviously, you wanna do it at the, get the best bang for your dollar or because it's limited, but think of the flip side. Uh, one of the previous speakers had talked about the common good and, you know, the potential illness. I'll be a resident, raise my hand and say, I don't want a section of town where you can't sell houses, uh, just because no family wants to live there. The poet is just a short-term fix for, for that. My, my little bit. Uh, if the call from the Board of Selectmen is to go through and have an analysis, sort of with those different components, sort of based on what might have happened in the last round, we'd be able to do something like that. And again, usually, this is in conjunction with the Board of Assessors. Inside of a month, they're gonna have their classification hearing, and we're backing into, um, your tax rate based off of unupdated levy limit and what have you. So it's a moving target, so the outside of eight and a half is really, I shouldn't say generous, but it's sort of that far end as opposed to dialing it down into things.
Madam Chair.
Yes.
Rich, I'm not a tax expert, but I just kinda remind people where we were on the hypothetical, uh, for the fourteen point two million dollar project, which had some interest on the ineligible portion, fifty percent split, town's portion about eight point two million over a thirty-year payback period. The, uh, the annual payment for debt service on the town side was fluctuated from like a hundred and fifty thousand a year to three hundred and forty thousand dollars a year, so that would be added essentially to the debt service for the town on an annual basis.
Little different calculations, as, you know, but again, um, not, not opposed to refining a number, uh, in conjunction with the Board of Assessors to, to have the impact. And, and have the decision made on the best number, though I think this project does need to move forward strictly on its merits just because of the potential downside.
Thank you, and thank you for letting me put you on the spot.
Didn't really answer my question because we still don't know, but based on all the hypotheticals of the poet or the water main, can somebody come up with a hypothetical number that it's gonna do to your taxes? I mean, I'm not...
So, maybe Rich can help this one. If we took the estimate that Jeff just gave, Jeff Faulkner, excuse me, of the one, I'm paraphrasing Jeff, one sixty-five to three eighty, was it, I think you said, or? Rich, how many taxable parcels do we have in town? I mean, you can get a baseline, but some parcels would be worth more than others. You could give a baseline sort of ballpark of taxable parcels, no?
Yeah. Uh, back of the envelope calculation for something like that at a meeting like this. I mean, if we're, if we're able to publish something like that, I'm thinking in a, a week or so, you should be able to refine a number that says your home valued at X, whatever we had for the, the median home, or maybe more accurately, the modal home, you know, the, the largest grouping size-wise, be able to get a, an expected increase, because again, you've got such a, you've got a, a bit of a moving target for, uh, for a lot of things.
Okay, so it's ultimately something we could do a little more work on to get a more specific answer?
We could start work on it, yes.
Okay.
And to be able to include that, uh, so ahead of the vote that's going to come up, here it is. This is approximately what's going to be, uh, two hundred and seventy-five thousand dollar house, three fifty, four and a quarter, and somebody should be able to do that. And again, it's an estimate, it's not specifically the tax rate, it's, it's the expected increase above and beyond, et cetera, sperrabus, all other things being equal.
Thank you.
Maybe it would help sway the people that vote no every time if we had some kind of number. We know, I mean, hypothetically, the, the poet system, it's, it's, that number's insane. And there's, and I think just, you guys are all for the water main. It would make sense that if you actually put out a number for the town, to see what it is. One versus the other. I'm not asking, just, what, what would it be? What's the difference between the two? To me, the poet's not the answer, but whatever. We're, we're getting nowhere. We've been fighting this battle for what, two years? Well, forever, as far as I'm concerned, recently.
Yeah, and I, I think that that's probably the, the best way to address that, is to make sure that we have a number or an estimate or something for town meeting, because it's, it's a question that came up at the last town meeting, too, and we didn't necessarily have...
An answer for that.
An answer for that either.
Excellent question.
So, yeah, it is an excellent question.
Thank you.
Yeah, thank you. Yep, Mr. Johnson.
Yeah, so hypothetically, it's eight million dollars at four percent per year over thirty years, what are we talking about? Half a million dollars a year spread over the entire tax base of the town? Could be, could be hypothetically.
I wish I had.
Uh, Nancy Boquette, sixty-two Eagle Drive. Um, so I have a system in my house, I wanna cure. There's three houses on our street for sale, and I think one has an offer and two haven't even gotten offers, so I don't know if it's got anything to do with the water. But, I mean, you know, let's cure it, let's get it over with. So would there be ever a time that I would have to pay for the maintenance of my system in my basement and my own water? Like, I get water delivered every month, you know, bottles of water. So would there be ever a time if the town can't, you know, if we don't fix this now, do the, cure it, do the water main and cure it, are we gonna some days end up being responsible for our own systems in our home? Possibly? I mean, maybe people need to think of that. I mean, it's, it's a lot of money, though, safe well, people come, they test the water, they came to our house, I think they were there for an hour and a half redoing the whole, whatever they have to do to it. I mean, it's a, it's a big process. So I'm just wondering, in the long run, will the town ever say, okay, you keep that system, fine, it's yours now, we gave it to you, but now you maintain it? So that's another thing people need to consider. I say do the water main and cure it and be done with it, but nobody wants to spend the money to do the water main, but maybe if they have to fix those, do those systems in their homes, you know, so, anyway, thank you.
Madam Chair?
Yes.
May I, a, a couple of, and I apologize, this is the trial lawyer in me. A couple of speakers ago, I think, left an impression wherein he was asked, uh, he asked some of the experts about essentially, you're going to have to continue to monitor and do phase two, et cetera, et cetera. Through you, Madam Chair, is the, is the testing, once a water line is in, the same comprehensive testing if it wasn't in?
The phase two with the water line versus the phase two?
The testing would have to be commensurate with the meat. So if you have the water line in, you're gonna, gonna reduce the, the amount of testing that's done, not just in the homes that aren't necessarily connected, but around the site as far as assessment goes. If the water line doesn't go in, uh, there's gonna have to be a lot more assessment done to determine the nature and extent and where, where it is going, um, whether your neighborhood in, in Circle Lane is truly part of the site, or are you seeing something, some other, um, source of PFAS? So that would be, that would be additional testing and, and sampling that would have to go on without the water line.
So through you, Madam Chair, so if you put in a water line, you do less, you, you still have to do some testing, but you do less testing?
Right, and, and without the water line, this problem isn't gonna go away in ten years. It's probably not gonna go away in twenty years if the landfill is still there. It's, the seventy-five years is, you know, that's, it could take that long before, before the site ever gets cleaned up. So this is, you're in this for the long haul, and the poets are, are a short gap measure, really. You're talking about something that's gonna go on for decades. Um, one of the things you mentioned was the, the maintenance. I think that will include changing the carbon, that's, that's another expense, that's, every time that it breaks through eventually, that will have to be changed. So there are a lot of expenses that go along with, with the poets, and the water line provides you peace of mind, and things like, like being able to hopefully make your, your property more attractive. So it, it's definitely worth considering as a feasible solution.
On that note, Madam Chair, one more question. Um, if, if the town goes with the poet's forever option, um, is there a deed restriction requirement by the, by the state on that to the, to the experts?
If you wanna achieve a permanent solution and somebody has concentrations in their well that are above the drinking water standard, then the town would have to, in order to get a permanent solution, have the owner of that property put a notice on the deed called an activity and use limitation, which, which puts the onus of the maintenance of that poet on the property owner.
Madam Chair?
It would have to be something that's agreed to by the property owner.
What I'm talking about is if you went with a poet forever solution. Right. And, and the town was responsible for... And the town was responsible for the Poets forever, would there have to be a deed restriction that notified anybody that was buying it that there was a contamination issue?
If you were to try to achieve a permanent solution. The other option under the cleanup regulations is a temporary solution, which just requires ongoing maintenance and monitoring from now till the cows come home.
Thanks.
Do we have any other questions? Yep, over here.
David Lanson, 44 Eagle Drive. Just to add to your point, so I reached out to...
Please address the board, I'm sorry.
Sorry.
Thanks.
The previous speaker to address her point, I reached out to Safe Well directly to compare the costs between, you know, having a water main line and actually facilitating the maintenance myself, and it was significantly cheaper to have the water through the town. Granted, I don't have an irrigation system, but a lot of houses on our road do, so just something to keep in mind. And in terms of purchasing a property as well, yeah, we, I moved into Eagle Drive last year, and the previous owners were required to disclose that information to us. So for anybody who is thinking about selling their home in the next 20 years, it's something to think about. But a question on the SRF loan as well. If it gets approved, is that loan an all-or-nothing loan? Or can they come back and say, you know, we only approved a million or two million instead of the whole 10 million?
Typically, the project gets funded if there's not sufficient, there's not always sufficient money, so they don't sort of chip away and try to do more projects. They would fund the project, but the project as it is on this intended use plan.
Okay, thank you. And previously, we kind of discussed that all of the wells on the properties would be capped. Has there been any discussion in terms of putting in, you know, backflow preventers or anything along those lines for an additional cost of the homeowner as part of that process? Or has that...
Public water supply has to have cross-connection protection. That's required of the town to do that.
Right, but if the well doesn't connect to the house at all, if we basically cut off the connection from the well to the home directly, would the well still need to be capped, I guess? Right.
Well, except that then you're watering your lawn with PFAS, so no.
Okay. So question, another question for the DEP as well. So if this project doesn't go through, at what point, if at all, can you guys come in and basically take over and trump what the town decides?
It doesn't work that way, and we had done a presentation. I'm not sure whether the slides are available, that the town has our previous slides, but the way the system works is that it's sort of privatized. And these licensed site professionals licensed by the state are charged with designing the assessment, designing the cleanup, getting the site to a condition of no significant risk. So DEP doesn't do the cleanups. The licensed site professionals manage that. We have an audit function where we look to see if it was closed out correctly, when it is closed out. The exception is when there are situations that require an immediate response action, which is, this is something that requires the immediate response action. Then there are things that have to go through DEP for approval on what specific actions are part of that plan to address private well contamination in this case. So there's no role for DEP to come in and take control, as long as the town and Gentex, through whatever agreement, you know, means nothing to us, because each party is responsible 100% for the cleanup, as to DEP. As between themselves, they can negotiate whatever. As to the Commonwealth, it's joint, strict, and several liabilities. So those legal words mean that each one is responsible separately to us for $100,000. I mean, for 100%. If everybody abandoned the site, and there were no responsible parties, and the Commonwealth had to come in and pay the money, we would cost-recover against the parties who didn't do the work, and we get three times our costs, and the statutory rate of interest is 12% because it's never been changed over many, many years. So there is an extremely strong incentive for the way the system works in a privatized way, because DEP is reluctant, but we sometimes do have to mobilize, for example, in putting in Poet systems where there is not a potentially responsible party to do that, and it costs us more money than it costs you to do, you, the town.
Not a question, but a comment. I hope that at the next town meeting, we can possibly have a representative from the DEP there, because I think that they provide a lot of value in terms of the process as a whole, and the real impact that this has to, you know, the state, the town, our community. So, thank you.
Thank you.
So Madam Chair, before you call someone?
Yes.
I just want to emphasize what Mary Jew just said. Not only is the Poet system number shockingly large, as Mary Jew said, the DEP mandates it, we have to pay three times the cost of what it is with a 12% interest rate.
If DEP performs the work...
Performs the work, right. But so, assuming they mandate it and perform the work, that number is going to be a very large number itself, and there's nothing we can do about it.
We have a site in another town where we're managing 40 Poets? Please sit down.
One?
Forty? We've spent, we've spent almost half a million dollars on Poet systems in a town on 42, 42 wells.
Mid 40s.
Mid 40s, 45 wells. We've spent half a million dollars so far. So that would be, we would go after three times that and the statutory interest.
And if the debt excluded as a town, the statutory interest anywhere on top of whatever we have to do to pay it.
Million five plus 12% to the chair.
Couldn't figure that out, I would have a chat.
No.
Scary numbers.
Any other questions?
Can I make one comment? Because you guys made very good...
Come on back.
I was a little bit trigger-happy before, didn't mean to say that word, but I would vote for it. It makes sense, it does make sense in the bigger picture. I'll suck it up for everybody else on our street. We all feel the same kind of way. We just hope the town doesn't forget us when we need it. We've, Sully, we've been through the snow plowing issues with our street, so there's a little burn there. That's why this is a little bit of a, we're getting screwed again. But the bigger picture is, we've got to do this. It makes sense for everybody. Just don't forget our street when it really, we comes down to us. We want to be, you know, on the ride as well, the free ride, not 20 grand in.
So Madam Chair, Gail, we do go way back, there's no doubt about it. And Jeff made it clear, we, I mean, I've been here a long time, I'm not going to be here forever. We can't give you that ironclad agreement.
I know.
But I think Sean and the DEP folks have said it best, if the numbers are there, your folks will go through the same process, and it'll go to town meeting, and it'll be a much smaller one, with inflation, who knows with the number?
At this point, I'd just be happy getting the free bottled water, because I'm not getting that.
I know, but...
I'm paying my own water.
I think, I think, I can't speak for everybody on this board, but we've gotten up at every town meeting, every public hearing, every pushing-your-cotton parking shop. I know, I can say with certainty, Mrs. Tashewski's new. Everybody has spoken in favor of this publicly, and if it comes down to it that you folks are entitled to some kind of remediation and relief, even if I'm a private citizen, I'm going to get up and say, these people deserve it as much as what we already had to have done previous.
I think with this Poet system thing, it's going to screw the people of Eagle Drive that have those systems right now if we don't do this. And I don't, I don't want to see those people screwed.
And somebody, I forget who was right there, I don't have the vote in front of me, but I think you're right, it was less than 10 votes. We needed two-thirds majority, and I don't take attendance, you can go back and look at the records. I can say with certainty, there was a sizable number of voters that did not come from that area to vote either yes or no. If you want to vote no, that's your right. At least show up and have your voice heard. I mean, you have a nice attendance tonight. I hope to see everybody at the town meeting. If you're married, bring your spouse, you know. If you vote no, you vote no, so Jeff said, it's the will of the people. But there was a sizable number of people that live in that neighborhood that weren't there. You know, your neighborhood, there was a few, yes, there was some that were missing. I know everybody can't make it, it's not a soapbox, but...
So, thank you.
Thank you, Gail, appreciate everything you said tonight.
Anyone else?
Good evening, George Patriss, Water Sewer Superintendent. Just wanted to make a couple of points here, okay? This has been commented before, everybody's worried about clean water, clean water, clean water, okay? Now you've got some contamination going on. But what people are not seeing is that there's other contaminants going on in the wells, arsenic, radon. We're mostly talking about PFAS here, okay, which is, which was the main issue here. Water Department takes care of all this stuff. You've got good, clean water, and I'll compare our water to Poland Spring, or Rolling Springs, or Offshoot Springs, I don't care what it is. We make sure our water is in great shape, tested, sampled, whatever. It's good, clean water, and it stays that way, and it's our responsibility to test it, and that's free money right there. The idea of water mains around that area, you've got to remember that some of these streets are fragmented with pipes coming in on easements and things like that, so there's not a lot of water main in that area. But the water main that goes in there right now is in the perfect direction for flow, to catch everybody, give everybody a good turnover, because if everybody gets on, they will have some good turnover of water. The water will maintain, we flush yearly, twice a year. We make sure the water's good. If there's any complaints or issues with the water, we respond to them. Any problems with the pipes or whatever, we respond to it. Any breaks or whatever, we respond to it. So if you want to go ahead and continue with the Poets, I mean, that's up to you guys, but I got to tell you, it's not doing your home values any good. It's not doing your lives any good with still mediated water. And anything else that comes in with contamination, you're going to deal with it. We're going to deal with it if the water main's in there. It's going to be our responsibility, so just keep that in mind. Thank you.
Well said. Mr. Durgan?
Hey, guys, Sean Healy. Are you guys going to be testing 31, 33, 35, fear of you have, moving forward?
Yes, they are.
All right. Somebody say something.
Mary Jew said, yes, they are.
I did. Yeah, we sent the information on those, on that property to the LSPs last week, sometime, I think.
Yeah.
Yeah, we uploaded it. Yeah.
So you'll be moving forward with the testing, next testing, next round?
Lisa, could, sorry, could you answer on mic? As someone who watches the YouTube videos after the fact, I...
Yeah, I mean, it might, it might be easier just to, so it's a, it's a public, it's an unregistered public water supply, so the owner of that property needs to come into compliance with Mass DEP's regulation to provide fit and pure water, because right now, it's not being sampled, it's not being treated, there's no indication of the, you know, the safety around the wellheads. So we're working, we've sent the information to the property owner about how to come into the, to the registered world of the public water supply. Having said that, if it were the town, the obligation is to test for PFAS on a certain schedule, depending on the size of the public water system. Because it's part of the site, the LSPs, the PRPs will be testing that property, those three wells.
So the data, and I talked to DEP about this last week, the data for those wells indicated that PFAS were not detected above the reporting limit. So at this point in time, there's not an indication that there is PFAS.
That's correct, it was all non-detect.
It's not non-detect, and there are other houses that are non-detect that are, continue to be tested for seasonal purposes, like you said, correct?
Any kind of sampling is a snapshot in time, on the day that we took the samples, DEP took the samples, on the day that we took the samples, it was non-detect at the reporting limits that that lab provided.
Correct, so wouldn't you have to do seasonal testing, like you have to do for all these other ones?
What I said is that the LSPs are going to be testing that prop, those wells going forward.
She's saying, oh, okay, fine. That's the answer, is yes, they're going to be testing it?
Whatever the frequency is, I don't know. And they were non-detect. So that's helpful information in terms of determining the extent. It's non-detect at 31 to 35, so that helps define where the contamination has reached so far. So that was good news all around.
Yeah, I think it does.
So Madam Chair?
Yes.
To Mary Jew, just, I thought I heard you say, so 31 to 35, you said was an unregistered, I forget the phrase you used.
Public water supply.
Okay, so they would be in a different category of an individual homeowner then, correct? You know what I mean? Like those, the person that owns those, are they considered in? Like, if I lived in a house next door and I was being tested, a single family, are they a different level because they have what you called an unregistered water supply?
No, it's more about how they are regulated by us.
Right.
So if you put aside the PFAS, because it will be, it's part of the site, site with a capital S, so it will be tested on whatever frequency the LSPs deem appropriate, but they'll be looking at lead, copper, bacteria, arsenic. They'll be doing all the things that a public water supply that George has to do to keep your water clean. All those same rules apply to this system.
Okay, that was my question.
They have to keep the wellhead safe, take out any uses around the wells that could potentially contaminate the wells. So it's a whole, there's a whole long list of things that, I mean, we find these from now and then, you know. If people don't necessarily understand that if you have 25 or more people, more than 60 days per year, you're a public water supply, and you are regulated by us.
I'm just trying to get ahead of it, Madam Chair, because what was said and the way it was addressed, I got a feeling I'm going to get some calls tomorrow from people in that complex. I used to live there years ago, but to be in that complex, wondering what, what does that mean? Thank you, I appreciate it.
Well, we have sent a letter to the property owner, and that's a matter of public record, and it describes all the things. You can go on our website and see, what does it mean to be a public water supply? You can see all of the things that it's required. It's kind of cookie cutter, so you can see there. They will come to us, and depending on what they have to sample for, we will issue something called a sampling schedule, and then that dictates what they do going forward, separate from all of this, just in terms of making sure children aren't drinking lead, all of that kind of stuff.
Madam Chair, through you, with respect to the testing for the public water supply, you indicated that this was part of the site, capital S. So the town is responsible for a Poet-type system, the town and Gentex would be responsible for PFAS contamination, but what about all the other contaminants? If there, let's say there's high lead, would the town and Gentex be responsible for baiting the lead?
No, I mean, it's, it's, first of all, it's non-detect, so, so great. So what I'm saying is, take PFAS out of the equation, it's non-detect. So the only contaminants of concern we would be looking at now are the routine ones, bacteria. Where is it in regard to septic systems? Is it, are there lead pipes? All of these different things, not PFAS.
And the town's not responsible for any of that?
No, it's a public water system, just like it's...
It's an unregistered public water system.
Any other questions? Yep, over here.
Madam Chair, my name is Chrisini, I'm at 63 Eagle, and I had a couple of questions, a couple of follow-ups, actually. Apologies. The question regarding Circle Drive, you never really answered it regarding whether or not you'd continue to be ongoing testing, when she talked about three, five, six, seven years from now, whether or not they would continue, as whether or not there would be continued contamination spread. And I think that was really the answer she needed, was how many more years, not just how many seasons she's looking for. Six months ago, we had the equivalent session of this, and the question was raised back then, the quote hypothetical, 50/50 town versus Gentex, that's still not set. We don't actually know how much the town will be paying, even though the question was asked six months ago. Is it, will it be 50/50? You still reference it as a hypothetical. Where's the breakdown? Because when you talked about the Poet system being 148 versus 72, 148 to the town versus 72 Gentex, that's clearly not 50%. So how was that number derived? And I guess the only other question I have is, is that I'm quite frankly pretty disappointed the fact that here we are, again, six months in, not our first vote at town, special town meeting, where the question was asked, what is the direct impact to each tax rate? We have $10.57... We have $10.57 for the tax right now. When we were going for the emergency overrides, at the Prop 2.5 override, we had a breakdown by every article, what the impact to each, what the amount would be to the tax. So what would be, for the special time meeting, what would be the impact? What is the breakdown? Is it 50% of the town? Is it not 50%? Why do we keep hearing this is a hypothetical? Where is that? When will we know whether or not it's going to be actually on paper 50% as agreed to by Dentex and the town? When are we going to have, when are we going to find out the answer to when the special, I'm sorry, the state revolving fund, when are we going to get an answer to the application? What date are we going to know before special town meeting? Will that still be up in the air when we decide as a town whether or not to fund it? And by extension, it would be nice to know for those people voting, yes, it is 50% of the town versus a continual reference to a hypothetical number. People want an actual number to vote on. So not only the impact to this town, to the water project, but I guess my other question is, how much does it cost the town right now to fund the Poet system? What's the impact to our taxes on a number? So we can actually have an apples-to-apples, a special town meeting, say, it's costing us 56 cents as a hypothetical right now, and it'll cost another 86 cents if we do the water project now, but those numbers will escalate over time regarding the Poet versus regarding the water project, because that will be a fixed number if we get approved for the SRF funding at 0%. So those are the questions I'm, those are the answers I'm looking for, that quite frankly, I suspect we need for special town meeting. Again, a lot of these questions were asked six months ago, and we still don't have the answers, and I'm quite frankly quite disappointed in that.
Madam Chair, I can let you know, the intended use plan for the SRF will not be available by the time of the special town meeting.
Attorney Blake, could you address?
Caution.
Yes, please. Especially the use of the language, like estimated or hypothetical.
Yeah, I don't know that I ever use the term hypothetical.
You haven't, but it's, I mean...
It's, the way the statute reads is that we are jointly and severably responsible for the cleanup cost, including total elimination, which would be the water line. The issue becomes, and I don't know enough about it, but if the project costs are solely for everything that would be required to eliminate the contamination, then it would be a 50/50 split. If, and I don't believe this is the case, if the town decided it wanted to do something else while they're there, Gentex could say, that's not part of the mitigation and/or elimination, so we're not going to pay it. It's my understanding, and I'm looking over at you, Jeff, it's my understanding that all of these costs that you have here are absolutely required. There's regulations that require us to put in a fire hydrant every, is it 500 feet of water line or the like. So under the joint and severally liable theory, it is a joint and severally, joint, meaning a 50/50 share. Right now, we are sharing 50/50 the costs.
Yeah, Madam Chair, through you, I'll add, our slides have the word hypothetical, because we're engineers talking about the cost of a water main project. We're not part of any discussion about negotiations. So those are why we use the word hypothetical. In regards to the cost, the $14.2 million, that is an appropriation recommendation. It needs to go through a full, a final design bidding process where select, why the contractor actually submits a price for it. So our hope is that the $14.2 million is in excess of what you will actually have to borrow. That's just the budget that we're recommending currently, and it was the 10.25 eligible value is what is submitted to the SRF program for their consideration.
So, Jeff Faulkner, would it be fair to say, fair to say that the reason some of these numbers are hypothetical is because we can't get an actual, we can't get actual estimates until we've like gone out to bid and done that kind of thing? Like, we have to approve the funds first and then figure out exactly what the bill is going to be?
So two layers to that. The hypothetical on the split is because we're not the ones that are part of any kind of negotiation of which party is paying what. So that's why 50/50 has generally been discussed. The actual costs of a construction project aren't known until the construction project is complete. You don't know if you're going to dig here and find a boulder that needs to be moved or not. So we prepare documents that contractors bid on every day that are estimates of how many feet of pipe, how many rocks they need to remove, and they put a fee or cost to that, a bid. So as the construction project moves forward, we find out how many rocks and boulders they need to move, and they get paid accordingly. So the budget is, kind of gets better focused as the design progresses. It gets better known on bid day, and then it gets better known upon the completion of the construction.
Through you, Madam Chair.
Yes.
Real quick, because for the people out there that are thinking, oh, wow, we're going to give you a blank check. Yes, we wouldn't know what the construction costs are until the project's over. But understand, we know how much the appropriation is, and we can't go over that without coming back to town meeting for permission.
So I hope that provides a little bit of clarity about why these are estimated numbers and why it's not set in stone yet, but I thought it was important to ask those questions. Mr. Sullivan?
So, Madam Chair, thanks to the ATA, we have a, we had, to the previous speaker, that's an excellent question on the actual costs. And I would hope within two weeks of the town meeting that we could have the cost per parcel. Someone said earlier, I was 275, 350, 470. So on an email string, which is public record, I'm not breaking any rules here, there was some dialogue after the last town meeting where the treasurer, and he can come up if he wants, with your blessing, with Jeff Faulkner answering questions, so the treasurer provided a debt service schedule. Effective 2, February 1st, 2027, running for 30 years, to 2, February 1st, 2056. And it came out with the principal interest combined cost at a 4.5% interest rate, which I think was being touched on earlier. So if Rich could come up maybe, with your blessing, it looks like the total of principal and interest, and again, it's assuming the 50%, I think, because it comes in at 6.960, $350,000. So if you double it, assuming a 50% split, which is what we've been using, less a million roughly, it comes out to that 14.2. So there is a schedule provided that would have to be fine-tuned with the assessor, as Richard said before, to get valuations based on the value of your own home. Am I correct when I say that? Get more numbers from the assessor.
You're reading an email from February 1st?
May 2nd.
Pardon?
Sorry, May 2nd.
May 2nd, okay. And we're looking for, just to fine-tune what was provided earlier? Or for the fall, the annual town meeting in May?
Well, I think, I think what, using, Jeff Faulkner gave a little range before, and it was obviously an estimate, but using the chart that you had provided, it looks like starting in 2027, the total for that first year is 325, 175, spread out over taxable parcels, based on your valuation, way beyond my pay grade. And that number goes down every year, just like it does on your mortgage.
Right. And you'd be factoring all of the useful lives because what's SRF-eligible as opposed to what is engineering cost? Restoration of a lawn is not something you can borrow 30 years for, so you end up with a couple of different pieces of it. But back to, I think, my last statement that, yes, absolutely, some refinement would be able to provide that. I'd love to take a few minutes at the town meeting in collaboration with the assessors, the rest of the financial team, to go through and say, a yes vote means, and be able to look at a dollar amount reasonably, so that pick someone in the room, your home is expected to be at an increase here, and then what that would be approximately, yeah.
Right, so the, Madam Chair, there was, again, we could put it up maybe, but there was an email above that from Jeff Faulkner, which states the SRF-eligible was $10,085,000. And his comment was, the delta between the 14.2 is ineligible and separately need to be financed by the town. That's the 0%. If I'm reading it right, Jeff Faulkner. And then the schedule that was provided, you add the numbers up, it appears to me it was based, again, on a 50% hypothetical. You can use that word. It could be, we could be on the hook of the whole 14.2, and in theory, we could be on the hook to 0, right? Somewhere in between, 50/50 is the number we've been using. So it, I'm just saying, the chart that was provided back in May gives a sliding scale cost. And if we use those numbers, I think for the previous speaker, we should be able to get something from the assessor within two weeks as to what that means on evaluation of a home at 300,000, 400,000, 500,000. And hopefully have a PowerPoint if we need some kind of presentation that'll put it up there instead of a handout. But I'm just saying that we did, we do have numbers. We didn't operate in a vacuum between Jeff Faulkner and what Rich provided back from May. So the ongoing process of the number has been ongoing, hasn't been, people haven't been participating, or whatever the case may be. We do have numbers that can be extrapolated.
Thank you. Any other questions? Rich always up. Nope. Thank you.
Thanks, Rich.
Any other questions? Right here.
It's just, PFAS is a terrible thing. It's really hit our community, and it's hit a lot.
Could you identify yourself? I'm sorry.
Robert Rosensky on Pier Point Road. I think most of the people here are probably from Eagle Drive, I assume? You have people who are private wells that's in town?
Yep.
Run regular water. We do have a municipal system here on water, right, in the town. It's a private enterprise?
Correct.
Is it still? Does our regular tax money that we normally pay doesn't go towards the water department? But now we're seeking that, it will. Look, the town, all the residents will be supporting this enterprise, correct?
This project.
Just this one project?
So this is changing. We're changing the town from an enterprise system to a public water system.
No, it's just this project that we're seeking to fund. It wouldn't change the entire structure of the water sewer department.
I'm just, I'm concerned about a lot of things. First of all, I'm really concerned you guys have bad water on Eagle Drive. I think that's absolutely horrible today. We all, everybody wants good drinking water. I'm sure the people in Flint, Michigan also agree, and they're still struggling. And I hope this town does see a result. And definitely, from the economics of it, it looks like the Poet system just doesn't make it. And I have some personal experience with that, because I have a daughter that is involved in this situation here in Dudley that maybe you're not aware of. Mace Chemical had a fire. That contaminated the area with PFAS. That is a contamination area that as of a couple of days ago, just started expanding even further out. Is there going to be any remediation down the road for them if Mace Chemical, which is a French operation, decides to just split and disappear? Is the town going to help out with these people, with the water systems? They're on a Poet system right now, out in that area, where it's failing. And with the drought situation that we've had, all the concentrations of your water and your PFAS is also increasing. If you have more rainwater, obviously you're diluting down, so you have lower readings. But right now, there's a lot of like breakthroughs. And I'm really concerned about the fact that PFAS at the low, at the level of four parts per trillion is now going to be extended down by the EPA and actually lower that number to where it's going to become more hazardous. And it's going to bring more people in. And PFAS, we've all been talking about, Gentex and the recycling center, the old dump, and it being the source of this. But also, what about the agricultural aspects? I've also studied a lot about it and found that just usual agriculture, the pesticides and herbicides and different products that farmers are using is also added to PFAS concentrations in the area. Now I have five properties, and I'm going to now be funding the well and paying for my own well situation, if I have a problem on my well, to fix it. I don't get any help or any assistance or anything like that, but I'm responsible for my water. What happens if I find out, and I'm actually scared, because if you go around and you just do a random test, and the testing, from what I understand right now, is about $1,300 if you go out and purchase a PFAS test, a place in Connecticut, I think a lab is down there, it's like 1,300 bucks to get the full boat, where you get the arsenic. You can get cadmium, everything else in there in a package, but it's about 1,300 to get down to that atomic absorption testing for the PFAS. What if I find out I have PFAS in mine, and it's nothing to do with the town, or Gentex, or Mace Chemical, or anything, just randomly due to agriculture over the years in Dudley? What happens then? Are we going to start extending water out to everybody? Is this going to be the solution? West Dudley has got a problem right now in the Mace Chemical, and I don't know that it's going to be a problem that's going to be solved and what's going to happen there. And they could just disappear. And I think that, you know, I'm really concerned where this is going, and if they're lowering the numbers, nobody's tested. If we all go around, there's nobody helping. The state is not coming down with saying bulk testing or setting up laboratories where they could get a bulk test, where people could start testing random wells and get samples to find out. We don't know how far the problem goes. It could be in your house and not the guy in the next well next door. It can be anywhere. And then what happens? What do we do? Extend the water further? At one time, we had a situation in Dudley where we had a good deal. We had a possibility of having headquarters for Coca-Cola Company down, down, on West Dudley, was going to have a headquarters down there. And the town would not extend the water lines out to West Dudley because of the cost. And, boy, they sure got a lot of money in Georgia from that corporation moving the headquarters down there. But actually had, believe it or not, Norma Cash Smith, I don't remember her, she was a fine name in politics, she had that arrangement almost in town. And I'm also concerned, is, the water department does a great job. You guys do a fantastic job in Dudley. But I am concerned about other things, like water pressure. Is this, is this adding to the system? Is this going to affect the amount of force that's going to take the pump? Are you going to have more pumps to pump that system? No. What is the water pressure supposed to be in the town system, in the water system? Varies, about 60 PSI? 120 on Mason Road, 127?
So I actually think we probably, I'm tying about, I don't know if you have the specs for that as a focus of the project, but I would imagine that water pressure is something that you've already figured out in the design work, correct?
Madam Chair, yes. The hydraulic memo that we provided the town did speak to pressure. The existing water system would be able to provide water to the Eagle Drive neighborhood without any extra pumps. In fact...
Because that's pretty close to the area, too. It's right down in that area. But we just had an area that just got water up on Airport Road, that, the complex, the elderly housing area that was put up there by the church, by the round church that we're all talking about earlier with Dan. But that area up there, the reason, that's why we're pumping out more pressure, isn't it? Because the water pressure was being low up in that area, so they had to increase the town water pressure to 127 PSI, 120s. I heard that the pressure had to be increased so they could get the water up there for them in that residence. That's something I heard. Because I know it's caused problems in my house. I got to pressure reduce because 127 PSI coming in.
So it sounds like some of this is maybe better suited for a water sewer meeting.
What is the effect of this going to have on other things, and what's going to happen in the future in other people? And now we are becoming a situation where if I need my well done, like you said, that if I find contamination in my well, there's some remediation that the state will help me with it financially, if I find PFAS?
You are your own water supplier, so it's up to you. There is a bill pending in the legislature that could possibly create a fund that's similar to the fund that the Boards of Health administer for Title V. It's kind of like a little baby revolving fund, but that's under consideration by the legislature right now as part of a very large PFAS bill, would create a revolving fund for homeowners to deal with PFAS. And just as a reminder, the PFAS chemicals are in everything. They're in your waterproofing on your boots, and they're on mascara, and they're on the slippery, I can't use trade names, dental floss. So your septic system, because you use consumer products containing PFAS, you use food wrapping that contains PFAS, there may be PFAS in there. So to say that there are pesticides... say that there are pesticides or agricultural use or whatever, you don't know. If you find PFAS and it's, um, above the 20 parts per trillion, which is the number for cleanup, um, you should call us. You should report that. And if it appears that you have a little business in your backyard waxing skis, that's probably your problem. If it's something else, and we look around and you're not next to Mace, you're not next to something else, we're tracking those, but we're not gonna create sites for every specific home. So, if people do their testing, and the PFAS testing is about $350, maybe less now, um, the PFAS testing, and it gives you a whole list of them, not just the six that, that we look at. Um, but the, um, the idea is the more information we have, the better. So, if we have data from homeowners, and even if it's below 20, if you wanna share it with us. But there is technically a legal obligation for you to report something that's over 20 parts per trillion for the six combined. But we, absent the ski waxing in your barn, um, we assume that you are down gradient of something else. Or, you know, if you're getting results that are very low, maybe it's from some other cause related to just the ubiquity of, of these chemicals in, in the environment.
I was wondering how far we're gonna find this. I mean, we, we were looking at a particular situation here, and we're, we're going crazy and gonna put water lines up there. And we've got 15 properties, right? Is that what we're dealing with? And it's costing about a million dollars per property?
No.
No.
Oh, it's 64?
No.
I'm not worried. He says 15 PFOS systems or something like that. What's that?
25 and a half million.
Oh, and everybody hasn't been set up on a temporary PFOS system?
Okay. Yeah. I don't have one. Okay.
Through the chair for a meeting decorum.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Questions this way?
Yeah. Thank you.
Getting off, but...
No.
Just questioning what's gonna happen down the road for, I am an independent, my own independent well system, and if I find problems, I'm gonna be responsible for it. And I'm also gonna be paying on several properties. I'm at a point where I'm retired, a fixed income. It's gonna be tough when you say, "I have a few properties, not fantastic multimillion dollar properties." But with all them added together, it's gonna be a lot more effect on my tax bill. And I thought we had an independent water system here in Dudley, where it was an independent thing, but now we're gonna have to kick in and help. And I definitely think it needs help. You gotta get water to people. That's more important, but...
So, it certainly wasn't an arbitrary decision to pick up this project versus other projects. It, I'm, I'm sorry, I should probably let Attorney Blake answer this, but, um, but because we were found to be part, ultimately the town was found to be part of the problem, we have to put up the funds to fix it. Um, if that were the case in other parts of town, obviously it would, we would have to be treating it the same way. Um, but it, again, it doesn't materially change the function of the water sewer department just because we are fronting the money to put in these water lines for this one neighborhood. It's just that this is the more cost-effective, well, I mean, based on all the information that we've gotten, this is the more cost-effective option. Like, I know a lot of people leaving town meeting were talking about, you know, they've projected this out to 50 years, and like, "I'm not even gonna be here in 50 years." So, who cares about the additional 20 years in payments? It's less to do the poets year to year. But, you know, when we look at those, just from a financial standpoint, look at those break even points. I mean, i- it's hard to say, like, don't do it just because it's one area. I, I mean, in my, my brain, that's all.
Well, it's a lot bigger than I thought, I thought it was, I thought we were talking about 15.
15 individual properties? And no, it's a lot bigger than that.
I was gonna say, 15 individual properties, and we're looking at $16 million, just buy the houses out and just let the land go. But no, okay, you're dealing with 60 something properties up there, okay. That makes more sense financially. But it is gonna, I think it does kind of end the, the independence of the water system. Though it kind of puts it on the burden of all the well people in town to be, uh, taking part in this remediation of a problem that Dudley basically is gonna have to pay for.
Yep.
So, all those days of dumping the old trash in the old dump are finally gonna come back and kick us.
Yep. That's, I think that's the story everywhere, unfortunately. Any other questions? Okay. Seeing none. Last chance. I wanna thank everyone for coming tonight. Thank you so much, DEP, and Ty and Bond, and John Haley, Attorney Blake. I, I know that this is a huge, like I said at the outset, it's an emotional issue. People want clean water. I, regardless of how this shakes out at town meeting, and I, I really hope people do vote for it and come out to the town meeting to, to vote in favor. Although again, as Mr. Sullivan said, it's your right to vote no if you feel so inclined. Um, just get involved, ask additional questions. If, um, if you are watching this on YouTube after the fact, and you have questions that weren't answered here, please just shoot us an email. Let us know, 'cause we wanna get you the information. We wanna answer the questions that are out there. Um, we're certainly not trying to hold anything back. Uh, and if your question wasn't answered tonight, we, we are around five days a week. You can find us. We're quick. So, thank you all very much. I think with that, we're gonna close out the public hearing.
Is there gonna be a vote at the meeting, or is there gonna be a holding meeting like this, around Shepherd Hill on the 20th?
Oh, the town meeting? There, there'll be a vote on all of the warrant articles, but there'll be like an individual vote on this. Yeah.
There's gonna be a small presentation.
There will be a small presentation. It will not be quite like this.
It will be a little bit.
Yeah. No. Mr. Carvenati? Come on down.
May I ask?
Yeah.
So, I have a water maintenance system that's maintained on town. So, like, they should add that to some, so I'm one of the 15 houses.
We have to go through the meeting still, sorry.
Oh, what?
We're still having the meeting.
Oh, you're sorry.
Sorry. Thank you.
My, my apologies.
Okay.
Could we have a quick 60-second, two-minute summary of what's expected? A nice little snippet on YouTube. Madam Chair, you, you hit the nail on the head, and it resonated with me. There is going to be this question. These things need to be satisfied to go to the state, so on and so forth. Sort of the pathway, what's going to be expected. Um, someone showing up would be able to get information ahead of the meeting by watching this or a condensed version of it, or a written summary of it. The information would be there. Uh, option of, and it's not eco-friendly, but sort of paper summaries there so that, again, best foot forward, most educated vote being taken, presumably with more than everybody who lives just in that regional area or who's hypersensitive to, uh, so I, I would ask for that. Um, my perspective's a little bit different, but we wanna have anybody who made the vote 100% assured that, yes, I knew this was coming and was, would be prepared for it. Thank you.
Oh, Rich, while you're here, do you wanna do departmental communications? 'Cause I think that's next on our agenda.
I'm gonna go into the actuarial valuation for the OPEB. This is gonna be the third year. I, I, I won't do that. I appreciate the time at the microphone. Uh, we have some follow-up in anticipation for the town meeting. Uh, really beyond that, um, November 3rd tax bills are due. As much as by statute, November 1st is a Saturday. I won't be here. But we'll, it, uh, it'll be the next business day, it'll be that Monday. But of course, we've got a great group of people in, in Dudley who are paying really, and I appreciate that. So, thank you for the time.
Awesome. Thank you so much. Police?
So, um, last Thursday, we had a bank robbery. Um, at 3:37 PM, officers were dispatched to Webster First Grady Union. Um, after the teller did a great job getting a description of the robber, the, uh, the escaped vehicle, our officers had the person in custody within 15 minutes. We recovered all the money, the, uh, the mask that was used, and, uh, we're looking into, uh, possible further charges. Also, uh, there was an unfortunate case of a Shepherd Hill teacher that involved, uh, an incident in Taunton a week ago where he was, uh, caught with child pornography and enticed a 14-year-old. Um, our department has been working very closely with Taunton Police, and I just wanna make sure that all the parents out there speak with their children regarding this incident, and if there's any issues, any wrongdoing that was committed by the teacher, to let us know. Furthermore, so on the good, good side of the new, uh, good side of the news, we received a grant money, uh, notice that we're, we're gonna receive $32,000 in, um, technology grant to update our server, our fingerprint machine, and purchase a new laptop. And on top of that, today, we also received notice that we're getting $22,000 towards the, um, it's like a click of the ticket patrol, extra traffic patrols, which will be, uh, used to, add extra patrols, purchase, uh, PBT units and radar units. And, uh, last but not least, our Canine Maverick had a, um, successful track on Sunday morning. I watched the body cam video in Oxford where the, uh, our hound went down the embankment along the, uh, tree line into the wooded area and was able to capture the, uh, the suspect within five minutes. So, we've had a couple, a couple interesting cases and, uh, some good, uh, information in the last couple of days. So, that's all I got. Thank you.
Thank you. I think that's plenty. So much. Um, highway. You're good? All right. Uh, since I have you. Water sewer? You're good, too? Okay. All right. And ATA?
I'm good.
Town administrator?
Enough.
Okay, great. So, with that, uh, we are, where am I? What's happening? Board member comments. Mr. Sigunovich?
I'm good. Thank you.
All right. Mr. Sullivan?
Uh, thank you, Madam Chair. I just wanna thank everyone that was here tonight. Extremely civil. You know, sometimes these really degrade quickly. Um, a lot of good information. And for anybody looking for a summary tonight, you could probably sum it up for them in a couple sentences. DEP, two LSPs, three engineers, all agree that the water line is the best final permanent solution. I don't care, I'm a retired mailman. I'm not gonna go against the experts.
Thank you. Mr. Starcheski?
Uh, just informing the board and the public that the fall town meeting on October 20th will be my last as town moderator. I've issued a letter of resignation so I can focus time on the board.
Thank you for your service.
You're very welcome. It's been fun.
Mr. Johnson?
Uh, I'd like to thank everyone for the, the honest and open discussion, uh, good questions, uh, tough questions, the right questions. So, thank you to everyone. And, uh, thanks again to, for State Representative Marzi, State Senator Fatman, and the town for recognizing Diane Anderson, who has put more, more time in, uh, than, than almost anybody in terms of, uh, helping the youth of, of Dudley move in the right direction. And, uh, hug your elderly, uh, parents, uh, and, and check on them. Thank you.
To kind of springboard off of that, um, in thinking about Ms. Anderson specifically, um, you know, 28 years is a long time to give your time and energy to providing for the kids that are in our community. Um, and there are always volunteer opportunities cropping up. Like, don't be afraid to reach out if you wanna do something new. If you find yourself coming home every day and camping out on the couch and you're getting kind of sick of that, like, there are so many different groups around town and boards within the town that could use you. So, that's kind of all I've got. Um, it turns into like a, a butterfly effect, and the people that you work with go on to do other things or get involved in other places, and they carry with them, like, the mentorship and leadership and all that stuff that you kind of learn, um, along the way. So, just, just a thought. Uh, hope to see everyone at the town meeting. And with that, I will take a motion to adjourn and maybe go into executive session.
Madam Chair, I'd like to make a motion that we move into executive session under Mass General Law, Chapter 38, Section 21A, to discuss the deployment and the strategy regarding security personnel or devices, e.g. a sting operation, not to reconvene an open session.
Second.
Roll call vote.
Carrie Sigunovich, aye.
Jay Johnson, aye.
Stephen Sullivan, aye.
Starcheski, aye.
Janet Deschaine, aye. Thank you, everybody. Have a great night.